All in favor?
Hi.
I. Dr. Harrison, over to you.
So, good evening, everyone. It's great to see trustees and of course, to our community members at home and my thanks to the many administrators that are joining us for our discussion around technology this evening. A number of important things to touch base on, and the first, I think we have to stop the pause to recognize the word anniversaries. And in doing so, when we think of anniversaries, we also think of positive events. Unfortunately, the anniversary that upon us is the death of George Floyd. This tragic event, this unnecessary loss, has ignited initiatives of change across our country to ensure equitable treatment of people of color. While we're engaged in necessary and important discussion and work in our school community, there is still need for significant efforts and change to be enacted everywhere. This is evidenced through the hate directed towards Asians and Asian Americans and now more recently, anti-Semitic hate crimes that are increasing across the country. We need to ensure that change occurs and that actions of hate cease to exist. We all have done, have to do our part by expanding our minds, enhancing our actions, and we need to be models for our young people to emulate. Folks, we have to be in this together. On behalf of the district, I'm committed to leading this change and request that you, everyone in our school community, maintain your partnership with me and make sure that you and we together demonstrate the necessary leaderly actions within this critical and important equity movement. Now, when we think about where we are in our school community, feedback is an important part of that process. And we're looking to gain feedback from our school community once again. Back in the 2017, 18, and the 2018, 19 school years, the district administered a school quality survey to gain feedback from parents, school community members, staff members, and secondary level students on the quality of their school experiences. The pandemic required us to take a break from that survey last year. This year, I felt the opportunity was before us to restore this practice while receiving feedback on COVID or distance learning specific topics. The survey will be administered in the first full week of June. All parents, staff members, and the aforementioned secondary level students will receive an email with a link to complete the survey. If that survey isn't completed within the first couple of days, you'll receive a follow-up email. I also want to assure our community members that responses that you give in the survey are completely confidential and that the district has no means of identifying those individuals who complete the survey. So I encourage you, ask you to please complete the survey as that resulting data. And the feedback that we received through the open-ended questions will surely help to inform the district and each school's planning in the years that come. Now, when we think about the work that we've done this year, there's lots of things that stand out. We think about little, simple things in the operations of our schools and being open 100% for student attendance on a daily basis. You know, sitting at the root of that has been our shared commitment to making sure that we have safe habits that really, really make a difference in the health and well-being of all of our students and staff. When we look back to yesterday, we had 113 students and staff members participate in our fourth COVID testing surveillance program. Once again, no members of the school community tested positive. So today, we've tested over 500 people, and in doing so, no positive cases, which is really a testament to the continued efforts of everyone in our school community. So this, I thank you. Our next round of testing will be on Monday, June 7th. Invitations will go out next Wednesday. So folks, please keep your eye on your email and we appreciate all of your support in this initiative. So when we think about our success, you know, there's a lot of things that happen across the district. And when we think about where we are as far as the pandemic, you know, truly being open has been an accomplishment. Seeing our students in the school building has been something that's been incredible. But we can't think that is where we end our work. You know, our teachers continue to do fabulous things on a daily basis. Our administrative team continues to work around the clock to provide for the best experiences and to lead safe-focused school environments. And there's tons of evidence of our student success that can be seen when you check out our weekly district newsletter or if you peruse our social media. And just a few highlights that I want to really draw your attention to, just to think of things that have happened over the last couple of weeks. Just in recent days, an IHS team of debaters won the American Debate League Champions Invitational, and one student also won the Top Speaker Award. We had 17 members of the Science Research Program earn award at the prestigious Westchester Science Engineering Fair, including several Best in Category and Specialty Awards. We had our senior, Henry Demarest, was selected as one of 625 finalists to advance to the final round of the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program Competition. The Academic Challenge Team will compete in the 2021 National Academic Championship. Four IHS juniors, members of the Science Research Program as well, earned medals at the annual Tri-County Science and Technology Fair, with one student being recognized as one of the top five researchers. And then we had one senior who was named Nicholas Papinow, named a National Merit Scholarship winner. And he was one of 16,000 outstanding finalists to receive this award. So when we step back and we think, you know, we look at the small things, things that seem to make a difference in the lives of our kids and that we're here in school and they're socializing and engaging with their peers and connecting with their teachers and engaging in that old-fashioned teaching and learning. But despite all the challenges around this, our students continue to thrive and none of that would be possible without outstanding environment that we all provide for them. The support and the homeschool connection that continues to exist. And of course, the great leadership of our teachers and the dedication and talent of our, all of our students. So when we think about honoring them, we certainly always look to post news about it. And in the future, I hope we have the opportunity to physically invite these students into this room so we can honor them and their accomplishments. And we need to make sure that we take time to honor our faculty and staff as well. Prior to the next Board of Education meeting, two weeks from tonight, we're going to take that opportunity to celebrate our retirees from the last two years, our tenure recipients from the last two years, and we're going to have a lovely ceremony here where we'll be joined by our administrative team and the friends and family of those folks being recognized. Unfortunately, because of our COVID restrictions and being able to maintain a safe environment, we're not going to be able to invite at-large community members. But I encourage you to think about those folks that are being recognized and send them a note of good wishes and thanks for all the good work that they've done. Because these folks truly have made a difference for many, many years. And we thank them for their dedication to the schools. And then when we think about the tenure recipients, we have to contemplate that impact that they're going to have for many years to come. So as we think about this school year beginning to wrap up in the next month, I begin to look forward to September and do so with great optimism and thinking about the wonderful experiences that we're going to have. And I found myself motivated yesterday by the words of Governor Cuomo when he indicated that he expects students to all attend school in person come September. That should be something that's energizing for all of us and thinking that, yes, we are defeating COVID. Yes, our schools are safe for in-person learning and that we'll be able to engage in more traditional learning experiences. While we're awaiting specific guidelines that we hope will be released from the Department of Health before this school year officially wraps up, we are moving forward and thinking about opening schools in traditional fashion with all of our students and staff 100% in attendance. And we're going to be thrilled to welcome them back in a healthy and hopefully a COVID-free environment and have a really fabulous first day of school to celebrate. So as we think about where we are today, I know many of us need some time to unwind. We need some time to relax. And we have a nice four-day weekend in front of us where we stop to honor Memorial Day and those that have served our nation and have lost their lives in doing so. So I hope that we take time to honor all those folks and take time to enjoy being with our family and friends and come back next Tuesday recharged, ready to round out what has been a really unique but important school year for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
I just had a quick question about the announcements. I definitely is very moved by what you're saying about the need to recognize and the challenges we've had in recognizing our students and our faculty and staff over this year. And just, I think it's been confusing for some community members because you have the CDC doing one thing, the state doing another thing. And I just want a clarification with our graduation and moving up ceremony. Are, in each case, are family members or guests of a student able to attend or are there some scenarios where that is not the case?
Yeah, so we have different plans in place for each school. I would say when we step back and we think about the guidelines that have come out from the CDC. When we think about the CDC guidelines, they are advisory in nature. We look to the State Department of Health to be able to initiate and identify what our local requirements are. So when we think about the general advisories that have come out indicating that it's safe for folks to be outside with out masks on and now greater latitude for individuals that are vaccinated to be mask-free. We have specific guidelines that we have to adhere to in schools where there are still requirements to wear masks on school grounds in the state of New York. So that's outside, that's inside the buildings as we look around the room tonight to see all of us responsibly wearing our masks. By doing so, we're compliant with the New York State requirements. There's also some conflicting guidelines out there with respect to outdoor gatherings and looking at the capacity limits for particular spaces. And that when we look at the size of a particular group, there are percentages. So for example, if we were to have a group of 500 people, we could be at 30% of the capacity of that particular space. So it's always easy to think of a stadium or an arena, right, where there's a specific number of seats. So you could think about those experiences and very easily do the math and say, hey, we have an arena, a theater that seats 1,000 people and we're going to be indoors. We could be at 30% capacity. We could have 300 people present. What complicates things for schools is that there's another layer of guidance that was specifically sent out to school districts. And here, there's tiers of complications. So anytime that we move beyond 200 attendees, it is required that we have folks that are vaccinated, present proof of the vaccination. And those other individuals who are not vaccinated must demonstrate that they are COVID-free. And the way that it is defined within the state guidelines, it indicates that what would be acceptable is results from a PCR laboratory PCR test that has been completed within 72 hours of the event. So it's either you're vaccinated or PCR within 72 hours. Then, let's say we have that group of folks of our audience and we've gone through and let's think high school graduation. We're thinking of some of the staff members that are going to be present, board trustees that are going to be present, our graduates, and we've extended invitations to their two parents. And we have to go through that process and be able to have that documentation with a burden being placed on the families and the students to be able to present that particular evidence. Then the next tier of the guidance indicates, just one more layer, the next tier of the guidance indicates that we have to have six feet of social distancing with the seating, which very much sits on its face as being six feet, which is contrary to the level of guidance that we have in schools with three feet of distancing. And, and yes, and so in testing as one of the ways to clear individuals. So when we look at the district's capacity to be able to manage that, frankly, we're a little overwhelmed being a small school to think that how we're going through all these routines to be able to meet those standards, to be able to do, facilitate graduation for our high school students, thinking about that high school graduation. But we're putting systems and structures in place. If you have a graduating senior or two, Mr. Hannah, that you know the communications and the protocols that are in place there. But then when we think about being able to replicate that for other schools, we're completely overwhelmed that we don't have the physical space to be able to do it. This year for the high school graduation, we know we can't use Matheson Park because they're still completing the construction project. Our plan then was to hold it in Sina Hudson Park. And when you think of the general park area all the way down at the tip of the peninsula, we couldn't accommodate the seating to be able to meet the social distancing and still be able to see our graduates. So we've now shifted a little further up the river and we're going to be in the outfield of the baseball field, still looking out over the river. But we're able to provide the necessary social distancing to make that happen. We can't replay that for the high school. We don't have the space to do it for the middle school. So for the middle school, we're looking to have a student-only event that's going to be livestreamed for the parent community. We're going to have students socially distanced outdoors on the football field and then looking if a rain date to move it into the theater. And that at each of the elementary schools, there's going to be smaller scale moving up like class-based events that are going to be held. This week, superintendents met with County Executive Latimer and representatives from the Westchester County Department of Health as we do every Monday morning. And we really expressed the level of concern and confusion, you know, coming back to those points. We were allowed to wrestle, but we can't have more people together for graduation. We see examples where certain folks, there are certain districts around the state are looking solely to the capacity limits. And as one of our neighbors indicated, well, maybe the capacity for Sina Hudson Park is 5,000. And if we look at what is 30% of 5,000, and we could have 1,500 people there. And think of these different possibilities. But what still exists and is still in writing to schools is that we have to maintain those other standards. Social distancing, testing requirements or proof of vaccination. The Westchester County, as they have been all year long, are advocating on our behalf. They indicated that later this week, they are meeting with the State Department of Health and are going to try to get them to put out some clarifying guidance that could help schools to better understand what flexibility we may have that could have impacts on the programs or experiences we could offer our students and their families.
Just one question only. Listening to it, it sounds like one significant change would be to relax that six-foot outdoor distancing. Is that something that the county and the superintendents would advocate for or no?
We had that conversation yesterday and some local departments of health, and I believe Putnam, was one that actually indicated that they would allow cluster seating so that you could have families, folks that are within that same theoretical bubble, sit together and which then would create more space because we could have the Hannah family, all of you sitting next to one another and save that additional spacing in between. But Westchester, when we shared that and some communications that had gone out from BOSI's, from Northern Westchester BOSI's citing information from Putnam Department of Health, really kind of stirred some unrest here in Westchester. And our Westchester folks, as much as they're advocates for us, the guidelines are pretty clear. And that what has been recommended or okayed in other counties doesn't follow the letter of what the state guidelines indicate for end-of-year events. So that's graduation ceremonies and proms. So we're hopeful that there's going to be some latitude, whether it's three feet of social distancing, which we're okay with it. We're saying it's okay in our schools. We're implementing that in our schools. If that's the case, it provides more opportunities for us. But the guidance isn't there for us as of yet.
But you and other superintendents would be open to and welcome that adjustment?
We've asked for guidance that will allow us to have the best experience possible for our students and their families.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but you know, we're disappointed as well and we have to think about what we can manage, what we can do safely. And, you know, I want to be honest that there's a part to it that I don't want to think about replicating. They, you know, high school graduation for eighth grade moving up ceremony, having that ceremony down on the riverfront is a special event that I don't want to steal the thunder, so to speak, hoping it doesn't rain, but steal the thunder from our graduating seniors. But we have to look at the time, timing of this, our ability to be able to facilitate all the appropriate processes. But what we're doing now is we're working within the bounds of the guidelines that are before us. It's disappointing and frustrating for all of us because we all want to be able to celebrate with parents and students these momentous occasions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jane, are you able to give us the safety update?
Um. We had a safety meeting and we discussed a lot of things. The field is, Carol, please. Everything's going ahead of schedule, working on the building and the district plans. We reviewed the district-wide safety plan, which is going, which is going to be posted for public comments and then Board of Education adoption. So please go online and look at the district-wide safety plan. And it's combined with the middle and the high school safety plan. The cap, we had an update on the Capitol Project. Everything's going well. And that's it. Please feel free to make comments on the safety plan.
Right, so as Jane mentioned, 30, we've opened the 30-day comment period. We're going until June 25th. So if you have any comments, it's already posted on the website. There's a link right to it on the homepage. Then email, and it says in the link, would email comments to, which is actually me as the chief safety officer. So if you would email me comments, anybody in the public is welcome to do that. And after that, we'll review any of the comments, make any changes that we need, and then we'll put it on the agenda for the July 6th meeting. If there's significant changes needed, then we would make, then we would do it later in summer. Thank you.
And I'd give kudos to Carol as well as our partners at Alteris. Trustees will recognize that this is much earlier in the year than we have been in the past. It just really shows the benefit that we have in the partnerships that we've, the board has supported with Alteris that's providing more and more support for us each year. So thank you.
Thank you. So next we have our first community comment period. So if there's anyone who wants to comment, you put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom to be recognized. So seeing none, we'll move on, but there is another opportunity later in the meeting. So with that, Dr. Harrison, back over to you.
Great. So as we well know, there's been a tremendous evolution in the use of technology, instructional technology in the Irvington schools. As I'm completing my ninth year as your superintendent of schools, I recall one of the priorities that was placed upon me was to evaluate opportunities to enhance the use of technology and the instruction of technology, looking at building a STEM program in the school district. And we step back and we think about where we are today and that we have campuses that have well-saturated with strong Wi-Fi networks. We have dramatically increased the number of devices that exist in our schools. We've developed the K-12 sequence of STEM or STEAM instruction. And we've built out a full sequence of computer programming courses at the secondary schools. So we've done a tremendous amount that has benefited our students, that has enriched their learning experiences, that has really kind of opened the doors of our classrooms to the outside world. But as we headed in to the pandemic, there were numerous shifts that we had to take and shifts that were necessary to ensure that we could connect with students, to make sure all students could access their learning, whether 100% remotely or in the hybrid model in which we lived for about three quarters of this school year. And as a result of that, we find ourselves in a different position than we were a year and a half ago. We also think about the amount of professional development that went into that work to make it happen. We think that going back last year, the 1920 school year, we launched a one-to-one model in the middle school that really served to underpin some of our thinking across the district as we transitioned into this model of one-to-one device experiences for our students. So tonight, Ms. Ellis and Mr. Strumwasser, our Director of Technology, are going to provide the board and the community an update as to where we are, what we've learned in this process and where we think we are headed. We recognize that technology is always evolving, that we're always going to be learning new things from these experiences that we've had. So we recognize that this is going to be something that's going to continue to shift as our practices and our thinking shifts. Additionally, as I referenced earlier, the administrative team has joined us tonight. And we're going to hear voices of our middle school leaders that are going to talk about their experiences specifically at the middle school. And Mary is going to speak to some of the general experiences we found at the other schools. And then as we engage in the dialogue later on, as needed, we'll promote the other members of the administrative team to be able to join us. So with that said, Mary and Jay, I pass the mic on to you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Good evening, trustees, families, and colleagues. Tonight, I want to present to you the state of technology in Irvington, where we are, what have we learned, and where are we headed? I came across this quote while looking through various resources. And I thought it was really apropos to bring to this meeting. "Technology will not replace great teachers, but technology in the hands of great teachers can be absolutely transformational." And I added the absolutely, I apologize. But really, what we have to understand is that technology has changed. How we use technology in the past is completely different than was intended and how different it will be in the future. However, technology is really not about devices. It's about how they're used and what they're meant for learning and improving outcomes for all. So tonight, we're going to be going through three different guiding questions. Where are we? What have we learned and where are we headed? And if you look below, it's a straight line because that's exactly how we've really gone. It has been a process as I've come into the district and a lot of the systems that you have, you will be seeing are a result of that. Before I move on, I do want to speak to the fact that this is the mission of the Irvington District. And we ground ourselves in the mission and its strategic goals in every conversation, and this presentation will be no different. So this looks a little bit familiar or should. It's probably in many of the offices that my colleagues and I have. But tonight, we're just going to be focusing on the top left corner. So if you look in the zoom into the top left corner, you'll see that this provides students with a rigorous, comprehensive, enriched, and diversified curriculum that prepares them to achieve their personal best, integrates technology into their learning. So where are we? Well, right now, we can say without a fact that all learners have access to technology in any time, anywhere, one-to-one computing environment as appropriate and relevant to instructional goals. All students and staff were provided with devices through the COVID quarantine and ultimately, when they returned to school, fall 2020 till now. In the same token, we also upgraded all of the Wi-Fi district-wide. And I can tell you that in the last 40 And I can tell you that in the last forty-eight hours, I've worked with the EduTech partners to look at our wireless survey that was completed. And I can tell you that we are definitely in the right direction. With minor changes, we will be one hundred percent saturated in all our buildings, which we could not say back in 2015 and 2017, as alluded to by Dr. Harrison before. With this increase of technology, teachers reported less time when facilitating lessons that involve technology, and they were able to gain quick and actionable feedback using various assessment tools, which we'll keep going into a little bit later in the presentation. So where are we in terms of classroom devices? We've already replaced twenty-eight new line boards, and they are currently in an eight-to-ten-year cycle of replacement. We currently have ninety-nine smart boards in place, which is planned replacement to new line over the next five years. And depending on how the budgets go, that would be something that we could possibly ramp up even sooner. The reason for the smart board to the new line transition was ultimately based on age and based on the functionality of the device. With projectors costing more money to replace or to repair, this was a better move as a district, as seen by our pilot program. Using feedback from our colleagues, we decided on the new line boards. Currently, there are five hundred and sixteen desktops and classrooms and offices, and older devices will be replaced as needed in the next budget cycle. However, we don't anticipate an increase for the upcoming year. And we're able to say that because a lot of our devices were not used as heavily as we're able to be fortunate to provide mobile devices in Chromebooks to most of our staff and students. Document cameras and web cameras were ordered for every instructional space, as well as speakers, which were vital in order to have a virtual learning environment and hybrid learning environment. Currently, we have fifty-five laptops that are in use in classrooms and offices, and only thirty-five additional devices will be added. However, we do have to think about replacements as needed due to the age of some of these devices. Again, we were able to offset this with the pandemic and being able to provide Chromebooks so that these laptops were not used as heavily as they previously were. Chromebooks. Currently, we have two thousand one hundred and fifty-six Chromebooks in use by students and staff. However, half of these devices may reach the end of life by June 2022, and that plan will actually be something we'll be talking about in the coming weeks. iPads. Currently, we have seventy that are in use, and I can tell you that many of the iPads were purchased for grants, for PPS, for federal purchases and purposes. And again, we are looking to a replacement cycle as needed, right now, based on the end of life, and that is forty-four devices. So I was actually showing a colleague this picture from another district, and they said, I can't believe how neat and how beautiful those wires look. And from a perspective of perhaps a trustee or a community member, that may not seem like a lot, but I can tell you that that really does look like a nice, very neat, organized racking system. And that's just one of the many racks that we have in our organization. Why did we need this? In the increase of the high-speed internet upgrades through all of our buildings, we're able to also provide one gigabyte with backup. So right now, we can say safely that if we were to have an outage, we do have a backup line, and we are not reliant on one provider. Not many school districts do have that in place. Further, we are able to provide a wireless access point installation and upgrade in the building, and this was due to our E-rate program, as well as switches, which have a current lifecycle of seven to ten years. And we're only replacing six in the next twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And again, based on E-rate, these are, these are provided with a federal funding, and we upfront the money and we get the money back as needed. Servers. Right now, the lifecycle is between five and seven years, and we are not slated to replace any servers in the next year. And I have to say to my partner and colleagues, we were able to finally provide a voice-over IP system in the 2019, 2020 school year, which has really improved our communications across the district. I know that it was a long-time project, and it was something that I was fortunate to be a part of, and we decided on a great product, and it has served us well. So during the pandemic, we were met with a different kind of a environment, as we all are very well aware. One important thing that we had to provide was off-site access. Previous to this, off-site access was not something that the district had a large stake in providing. We were able to provide thirty-five jetpacks, which are mobile devices similar to your cellphone, and that have only the ability to have internet access. And I can tell you that based on COPA and FERPA and SIPA compliance, these are also filtered by our provider. Many of the tools that we used were web-based, and as a result, we needed to provide a device in a Chromebook, as well as the access in a jetpack to provide equity for all of our stakeholders. So where are we with the impact of teaching and learning? So this chart, actually both of these charts came from the Clarity survey. And the Clarity survey is through a company called Bright Bites, and it's something that we've been doing for a number of years. And as a result of being very detail-oriented in completing all of these surveys, we're able to get some really good data points. So one of such is the infrastructure at school. And I just want to highlight that from the yellow to the green shows that we went from proficient to advanced, and that was between a five-year span. So student access at school and teacher access at school were the contributing factors that were notated in this slide. So as part of my role in data privacy, as well as chief information officer, I have to also give you a report about the current state of data, data privacy. So right now, all learners do have access to technology, as we spoke about before. However, the consumption and interaction with those devices is the next part of this conversation. Since July 2020, all software used within the learning environment is approved for use under New York State Education Law 2D. Currently, all of our resources are vetted by myself as the data privacy officer and are only unblocked based on certain criterion that are met. We utilize some of our partner resources to help score those applications based on their privacy documentation. We negotiate back and forth with those vendors and ask them to sign the documentation. Otherwise, we do continue to block the applications from being used within the district. However, resources provided have led to increased opportunities for learning both in and out of the classroom. And I'm going to show you this approved technology list to just give you an idea of what this looks like. I believe you can see the screen, if you can please confirm. Thank you. So currently, all of our applications are brought through this system. And as you can see, there's a contract that's signed, a bill of rights that's also signed, any supplements that are available, and then the overall privacy score. And if we've approved and edited, we approve it based on the grade level as well. This is something that's going to be added to the website to bolster our our paperwork to show the state that we are in compliance. I'm pausing when I go back, I apologize. Mary, I believe at this point, we're going to promote Allison and David.
Yes, thank you very much for that overview, Jay. We're going to have the opportunity now to hear from our middle school leaders about the experience at that building in particular. And then I'll be giving you an overview of what we feel we've learned from the other buildings as well. Follow will pass off right now to Irvington Middle School Leadership.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. Thank you, Jay and Mary, for the lead-in. We're excited to talk a little bit about where we stand right now with our one-to-one initiative at the middle school, having, some would say fortuitously begun that initiative last year prior to, you know, the world changing for all of us. But that was an initiative that built over time, really the demand for us to move in that direction built over time due to a number of factors. The middle school had begun to ramp up the number of devices available in school for students for a variety of uses in classrooms over a period. We had gone from having a pod of desktops in classrooms to having one or more buckets of Chromebooks available in classrooms, a cart that could be signed out. And we had reached a point where we wanted to continue to grow with the ability to integrate technology as appropriate. And we've been using something called the SAMR model, which really is a way in which that we can examine the degree to which we're integrating technology. You know, SAMR is an acronym. At the very basic end, it refers to the idea of substituting. You know, that's the S where you're basically doing the same thing with technology that you would be doing without it. You're just using technology to do it. Think of typing as opposed to writing on a piece of paper, all the way up to R, which is redefinition, where you're doing something completely different and completely transformational as a result of having the technology available. And what we've been seeking to do is to move from that, those areas in which we're substituting to where we're augmenting, we're modifying, and even redefining our instructional activities via the use of technology. And where we had been was this idea that with a limited number of devices or the need to try to, you know, get devices from one classroom to another on a given day for teachers to be able to do that on a one-to-one basis, had stunted that growth, had gotten us to the point where we were no longer growing at the pace we wished to. Concurrently with that, we had been in a BYOD environment where we were allowing students to bring personal devices. And what we learned over a long period of time was really, at the middle school level, that's not the model that we wanted to continue with. And there was a demand for change from inside our school, as well as outside our school, and one that we recognized was appropriate to respond to. So that led us into last year. And, you know, at this point, it's really difficult to separate ourselves from the idea of the one-to-one model and having to have lived through the hybrid and distance learning models of the past fifteen, sixteen months. But one thing I can say for sure, that even prior to the pandemic and as we move forward, what I could say is the presence of a one-to-one model, the presence of having students each have their own device, a device that was standardized, a device that was monitored and filtered by our school district, a device that was always connected to the Wi-Fi in the building, didn't have to be logged off from and logged on to each period as one student traded the device to another student and picked up a new device in his or her next classroom. All of those things, they led to an ability to take the next step in creating interactive environments. You know, our teachers recognize that the availability of that technology in appropriate classes, in appropriate subjects, and with appropriate learning activities would allow them to move from a, for instance, a lesson in which they might present information in a one way or a model in which teacher delivers, perhaps ask questions, teach students respond to questions, or students discuss with one another, but only one of those things is happening at a time, to using technology such as the ones you see listed there on the screen, NearPod and Perdet there are two that were in use prior to our pandemic, but have become ubiquitous at the middle school, and I know in so many other places over the course of the last year. They're a way to combine some of the benefits of things like a Google Slides or other presentation software, whether it be web-based or what have you, and add in the ability for there to be two-way communication within that, within that program. So teacher might have slides that he or she is utilizing to present content to students, but students can then, you know, answer back via that same device. Students are able to pace themselves at times, depending upon what the, depending upon the design of the teacher. You know, the teacher can make the election to have the slides be presented or the lesson or activities be presented in a student-paced mode, where there's an opportunity for independent work or students working in partnerships to do that in a way that is, that is going at their pace and meeting their individualized needs, therefore allowing for greater collaboration. Again, collaboration was something we had already been working on for quite some time through our implementation of things like the Google Suite. And I know I'm not using the most updated term for the Google Suite. I can't keep up with all the Google changes as far as names go. But I can tell you that the use of Google Docs, for instance, Google Forms is another, have been a way that we have built collaboration both in class and across classes and between teacher and student over several years. And again, the presence of a device in each student's hand that was going to be standardized and able to, you know, be standardized, I think I said standardized twice, be standardized across students is is something that was a real positive for us there. You can see in the image, I love this picture. It's a picture that's hanging in Irvington Middle School right now. But it's a great image because it shows a student who is working with the use of a device, but still working there with a pencil and paper, combining new technology, old technology as appropriate. And that's a good example of a teacher's design that is looking to add on to what students might have previously done, but do so in a way that respects and honors the value that existing techniques and existing approaches have had over the years. I'm going to pass it over to Allison for a moment. She's going to talk a little bit about the use of our one-to-one model to enhance our abilities around feedback, assessment opportunities, and data collection.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start by apologizing to say that my camera is not working. And if I had known this five minutes earlier, I would have actually come to the CPR because I'm actually in the middle school in my office. So Dr. Harrison is troubleshooting, so thank you. But he's asked me to go ahead, and I apologize for not being on camera. So I want to thank the board, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Ellis, and Ms. Stein for providing us with the opportunity to speak this evening and share how the adoption of a one-to-one model has enhanced the teaching and learning at Irvington Middle School. Over the past few years, we have shared examples of work happening at IMS that aligns with the district assessment goal of developing a balanced assessment system that measures student content knowledge, skills, and dispositional thinking. I'd like to take our time together this evening to share how the implementation of a one-to-one model has specifically expanded the ways in which we assess student learning with the goal of elevating student learning. As we know, assessing student learning plays an integral and continuous role in teaching and learning. This includes assessment of learning, also known as summative assessment. Specifically, assessment of learning is when a teacher assesses whether a student has learned what the teacher intended in terms of the learning outcomes. Over the past few years, in addition to studying best practices for summatively assessing students, we have also engaged in professional learning on practices for assessing forelearning. This type of assessment is also referred to as formative assessment and is essential because it provides opportunities for a teacher to monitor student understanding during the learning process. By formatively assessing students while the learning is taking place, teachers are able to identify what a student does and does not understand. In response, a teacher is able to provide timely and targeted feedback with the goal of improving student learning. With the implementation of the one-to-one model at IMS, we engaged in numerous professional development sessions to identify, explore, and adopt a host of tools to support the ongoing assessment of student learning, both formatively and summatively. With an understanding of the iterative process of assessment, specifically the relationship between assessment and learning, our teachers are continuously planning for how they will elicit evidence of student understanding over the course of a lesson. This is not a hit-or-miss effort, but rather planned carefully in advance using a variety of techniques. During the next few minutes, I will share a few of the digital tools and techniques our teachers have successfully integrated into their ongoing practice with the goal of assessing student learning. Jamboard and Padlet are two digital Jamboard and Padlet are two digital tools that you may have heard your own child speak about. These are utilized in many of our classrooms. While these tools have their own unique features, they are similar. In that they both serve as an interactive whiteboard where students can share their thinking. And respond to others' ideas in the form of a digital post-it. Both of these, both of these tools work seamlessly with the Google platform. And are often seen on a teacher's Google classroom page. It is not uncommon to visit a middle school classroom, whether it be a core content class. Or a unified arts class and observe students posting on a jamboard or padlet. That the teacher has created as an entrance ticket or exit ticket, both of which are examples of formative assessment. On a recent visit to one of our science classrooms, I observed students posting their thinking on the jamboard. The teacher had created to connect and assess the previous day's learning. The teacher asked the students to examine an image on the jamboard and respond to a question. How is the moon different during a new moon phase than during a lunar eclipse? As students posted their responses on the jamboard, the teacher reviewed them in real time. Identifying three students who she assessed had some level of misunderstanding. In response, while the other seventeen students shifted to the next part of the lesson. A hands-on activity to model a lunar eclipse, the teacher met with these three students in a small group. Using the Google Meet, she gathered the three students and provided direct instruction. That targeted their misunderstandings and prepared them to then go off and participate in the follow-up hands-on activity. Another set of digital tools that David mentioned a few minutes ago are NearPod and PairDeck. That teachers are using to provide direct instruction and assess student learning along the way. Similar to Jamboard and Padlet, these tools provide opportunities for formatively assessing the whole class. As well as each individual learner during a given lesson. What is truly unique about these interactive presentations. Is that they allow students to work independently, responding to different questions throughout the deck or deck of slides. The power of this is the rich formative assessment data it provides teachers in real time. As student responses appear on the teacher's screen only. While building their deck of slides, teacher can choose from a host of different question types. Such as short and long answer responses, multiple choice questions and questions that take the form of agree or disagree. Another invaluable feature of this type of interactive tool. Is that all students are held accountable to be active learners. Sharing their thinking by typing their responses as the instruction is being delivered in real time. As a result, as teachers move through the presentation, they are constantly taking the pulse of student understanding. Teachers can highlight a specific student response, toggle between student responses. Or in some instance, share a student response if desired. During the presentation, teachers also have the option of adding impromptu questions. An example of responsive instruction and shifting the pace from teacher-led to student pacing. Finally, all student responses are collected on a class spreadsheet. That the teacher can use to then plan for next steps of instruction. To just give you a sampling of how one teacher utilized a pair deck. To assess the writing skills of her students, I'd like to share an example I recently observed in one of our writing support classes. The teacher designed a deck of slides to support the students in developing the skill of elaboration. Using the strategy of descriptive action details. To begin the lesson, the teacher presented a slide that asked students to engage in a focused free write activity. With students reflecting on the use of elaboration in their writing. As the students responded to the prompt, the teacher read their responses only visible on her screen in live time. On the second slide, the teacher presented the students with a simple sentence and directed them to revise the sentence using descriptive details. In her lesson reflection, as part of our discussion. The teacher shared that her analysis from just those two brief opening formative assessments. Really impacted and caused her to adjust her lesson. She wrote, "In my original lesson plan, I had also planned to show a model of a sentence with descriptive action details." Based on the formative assessment I gathered from the first two activities, I had evidenced. That all the students were capable of trying out this strategy of using, using action details. And therefore I made a lesson adjustment skipping ahead to the next part of the lesson. Which gave the students more time to independently apply that skill to their own writing piece. As we know, feedback provided to a learner is a critical part of the assessment process. Sharing feedback during the process provides students with the time and most importantly, the expectation. That they are responsible to apply the feedback received, which is a necessity for real student growth. With the implementation of the one-to-one model, we've also engaged in professional learning with the goal of expanding our repertoire. Of digital tools that we can utilize to provide feedback efficiently, frequently and effectively. Google Meet and the Meet Breakout Room feature have enabled teachers to continue the practice of one-on-one conferring. Which is notable during our challenging times related to health and safety protocols. These sessions provide teachers with the opportunities to meet with individual learners and share feedback on their learning. In the form of a verbal conference. It's interesting to note that even with the shift to all students return to the building. Many teachers have continued to utilize these platforms of breakout rooms and the Google Meet. To continue their conferring in this way, noting that they're able to more readily. Share digital models of samples of student work. And provide targeted feedback with greater efficiency and responsiveness. Google Docs, as David mentioned, are another app on the Google platform that our teachers have been using and are continuing to use. What's notable this year is that they've really increased the potential of the Google Doc. Specifically utilizing the feedback feature in the comment section. An additional tool that's even further enhanced the feedback a teacher can provide to a student. Not only on a Google Doc, but on a Google Slide, a Google Form, a Google Sheet. Is the tool that you may have heard of called Mote, M-O-T-E. Mote is a very simple Chrome extension that teachers can use to add voice comments. So now we have teachers utilizing the tool of Mote to provide. Voice comments, so verbal feedback as well as written. Feedback that they use using the comment feature again on all of the different Google apps. Students can immediately hear and play back the feedback a teacher leaves via Mote. And students have the option of responding to the teacher feedback. Such as explaining how they've applied the feedback the teacher has shared, adding their own voice comments to the initial teacher recording. Another way in which our teachers have expanded the use of Chromebooks this year. Is having students use the video recording feature with the goal of assessment in mind. For example, in our world language classes, you often see our students using the default camera on their devices. To record their interpersonal speaking, which automatically saves to their Google Drive. The teacher and then the student have immediate access to the student recordings, which the teachers are in the habit. Of listening to and providing feedback. This past year, our world language department worked with our secondary instructional coach Sarah Russ. To further this practice, developing a system for communicating feedback to students. They collaboratively developed an individualized student digital portfolio using Google Sheets. Specifically, the teacher listens to a recording and provides student feedback in regards to their discourse level, accuracy and communication strategies. This is just one example of one way in which teachers are using video recording tools to support ongoing assessment. In the spirit of time, I will not continue along that. Before turning the microphone back to David, I wanted to take a moment to highlight. How the rollout of the one-to-one model has also greatly supported the scheduling. And administration of the computer-based assessments we administer across our grades, which include AmesWeb. Where we gather reading and math data three times a year in all three grade levels. And the Apple assessment, which is administered, excuse me, in the spring in our world language classes. As a result of students having their own school issued device. Teachers are now able to administer these computer-based assessments in the classroom. This is important to note because before we had the rollout of the one-to-one model, teachers had to bring students to the library lab. We weren't, additionally, we were not able to administer these assessments to students. What's notable about not having to go to the library lab is that. Teachers are not losing instructional time. In the past, when students would. Go to the library lab, those were minutes lost going to the library. It was also additional minutes when students were logging on. To the desktop computers. So being able to stay in the classroom saves instructional time. It also allows us to administer these assessments in a more timely manner. If you can imagine all of our ELA and math classes across three grade levels administering the AmesWeb. It would take us three to four weeks to cycle all of those classes through the library lab. With the ability to have students take the assessment in the classroom. We're able to have those assessments conducted over the span of just a few, a few days. And the same with our Apple assessments. And when we think about adding the additional writing Apple assessment in the twenty-one, twenty-two of school year. It makes the case that it is, we are much better served in terms of saving instructional time. Being able to administer these types of assessments in the classroom. As we shift our presentation now to sharing what we've learned and sort of our next steps. My hope is that I was able to give you in these few minutes tonight, a sense of. The truly vast and impressive ways our teachers are integrating technology into our daily instruction. With the goal of assessing student learning and providing that targeted, timely feedback that's essential to continued student growth. And now I'd like to turn the microphone back to my colleague, David Sotile.
Thank you, Allison. You know, and, and Allison, I think did a marvelous job of, of. Identifying and, and kind of articulating so many different ways in which. The, the, the various technologies that, that come along with having a device in, in students' hands. Have enhanced our, our experiences. I, I'd want to add, you know, it's important to note that it's not just each, you know, website or, or whatever. Program that we're talking about that makes the difference. Those are all great. It's the fact that they're able to be accessed at any time in any class because every student. Has a device, every teacher has a device. We're not. In a position where we're trying to beg, borrow and steal a device to put in a student's hand. And that's a big, big difference. It cannot be overlooked. The importance of having that access on, on an as-needed basis. So we want to talk a little bit about lessons learned and certainly that is very important. Because the, the rollout year last year, we did a lot of learning and, and. In some ways, we, we were, you know, we were learning along the way and then we, we learned a lot more come March thirteenth. You know, Allison mentioned a number of professional development opportunities. Pardon me, a number of professional development opportunities that took place last year. Certainly, we recognized. Very early on that it was necessary not just to have provided prior opportunities to learn, but ongoing opportunities to learn. And what I can say for certain is while those were happening, we had, we were using PLRD time, we were using faculty meeting time. Different departments had, had, had chosen to use their meeting time to, to focus in on one or, or another application that might be useful. For teachers in a particular subject area or a way in which to use it in that subject area. But we recognize the need for an ongoing commitment to professional learning and. If we're looking for evidence of that impact, all of those things that Allison talked about were things that might have been in their, their introductory stage. A year ago, when we went out for, for pandemic or, or over the course of the first half of the year. They all got kind of supercharged because of the professional learning that we committed to. Last spring and throughout our flex days this year. Through opportunities that Jay provided. Through opportunities that, that our instructional coach provided through opportunities. That we continue to look for outside of the district and inside of the district. So. We recognize that there was, there was and is a need, will continue to be a need. For continued growth in terms of how to apply technology to our classroom spaces to continue to move us along that SAMR model. And that's, that's for teachers, that's for other practitioners, specialists. That's for our teaching assistants and aides and certainly they've gotten their own professional learning along the way. And that is, that is definitely something that we learned. While we knew it was important going in, I think we recognized even more so. The importance of it being ongoing, of it being a focus and, and of us committing to the idea that we want to continue to grow. And, and to, to acknowledge what, what growth looks like. In addition to support from an instructional standpoint. What we know is that we need continued support for infrastructure. We need, we need the infrastructure. To support our devices, wifi and what have you. But we also need to, to have support to make sure that the devices continue to work. Whether it's a student who comes to school with a Chromebook that isn't working properly. A screen that gets cracked, a, a need for some sort of a help desk. We've, we've continued to refine the, the processes by which individuals can get support, but we need to, we need to continue to grow in that area. I would say that, you know, as you see on your screen there. The increase in edutech staffing is, is certainly a big help. But I can tell you that as someone who's been in the district for quite a while now. Our edutech staffing is not substantially greater than it was when I started here in, in, in two thousand and nine. And we have inordinately more devices on, onsite in our, in our building and in the buildings across the campus. We have more infrastructure, we have more servers, we have more of everything. And Jay went through that inventory more eloquently than I will tonight, but I can tell you. That it is, it is critical that we continue to make sure that we have the right staffing in place to maintain our, our IT infrastructure. And, and support our devices in the hands of our students and teachers. So that we don't have obstacles or, or, or speed bumps that get in the way of, of using those devices for teaching and learning. And, and, you know, we're very proud of that work. We're very proud of what we've, you know, we've gone on a bit here tonight because we are proud of what's been happening at the middle school. We, we look at the one-to-one implementation as a success story and, and as one that is, you know, you know, has the potential to continue to be more successful. As we continue to grow. But we recognize that, that we have continued needs and, and continued learning to do and we want to support that as well. So that's where we stand. Jay, Mary, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but that is, that is the status of the one-to-one initiative as it stands right now at Irvington Middle School.
David, Allison, thank you so much. We're all tremendously proud of the work that's going on at the middle school. And as Allison was speaking, I couldn't help but thinking about. How everything that was shared about what happens in classrooms is really about good teaching and impactful learning. And this year, our teachers have made a phenomenal shift to ensure that that teaching happens through the use of more technology. And connecting back to the quote that Jay shared earlier. The technology will not replace great teachers, but technology in the hands of great teachers can be transformational. Allison made it sound so seamless and so easy. I want to be sure that everyone recognizes the tremendous lift that this was for our teachers. To be in this new environment, to learn new skills, new technologies, new applications. It sounded so easy. And I just want to say a thank you to all of the faculty and staff in Irvington for. For really, really stepping up and learning what needed to be done so that the really high quality teaching and learning could continue. Okay, so with that, we're going to talk about a little bit more about what happens. What we've learned about in terms of what happens at Irvington High School and then at the elementary levels. You're going to see that there's a tremendous amount of overlap. As I said, what we've learned has been the path the district has been on for a while. In terms of looking at high quality instructional learning. So rather than reading every single bullet point on here, because there will be a fair amount of repetition. I'm going to highlight some of the things I'd like you to think about. So at the high school, we can see that they were also highlighting for us that collaboration and interaction. Was a huge thing that made learning in this environment possible and the techni- technology and the applications we. For that. The high school also highlights the real-time assessment, giving feedback. And I, I wanted to go back to something Allison said when she was talking about feedback. We often think that when teachers are assessing and providing feedback for students, that that idea of formative assessment. Allows us to identify students who may not be understanding and we can reteach, review material. But she gave an example of a teacher who used that formative assessment to realize. That what she had planned to do in a lesson didn't need to be done at that point in time. The kids were ready to move on. So the use of formative assessment isn't only about supporting struggling students. It can be about a teacher recognizing where the whole class is and therefore making adjustments in their pacing. Going on with the high school, this also allows teachers to individualize instruction. Going on with the high school, this also allows teachers to individualize instruction. Google Suite, all the various ways that teachers can interact with students has allowed for a level of individualization that is actually more challenging to do in a classroom, which is why they mentioned that some of these tools they're still using, even though the kids are all in the classroom. They also stress the need for ongoing support. And David spoke to it and Jay a little bit about the incredible intensity of professional learning that was offered for teachers and what they took advantage of this year. So Jay, you want to move to the next slide? Thank you. So at the elementary level, you're going to see many of the same points that the professional learning was tremendously important. We did find, as we've talked about many times, that learning on a device was definitely more challenging for our younger learners. One of the things, one of the changes we made partway in was to improve our login process and go to a single login for students, which was tremendously helpful. You know, a kindergarten student having to log into one application and then another, very, very hard. And at that age, the parents were finding that they needed to give so much more support. So we looked for ways to structure things that would make that happen more smoothly. Many of the same products in terms of Perdeck, Padlet, Google Slides, Classkick were applications that our teachers found helpful in this environment. Again, Dalsane and Main Street addresses the idea of timely and specific feedback. And one of the things that happened particularly at the elementary level that was not happening to the same degree before was the idea that both students and teachers could be collecting a lot of data about progress. So many of these applications allowed for very quick turnaround time on check-ins with how students were doing. And so that allowed for both the students and teachers to be tracking progress with these tools. You have the next slide, please, Jay. Thank you. Another thing that we found at the elementary level, you know, you walk into an elementary classroom, there's always going to be shelves of books. We couldn't hand out books to kids in this environment. So we ended up subscribing to several platforms that allowed us to give high-quality texts in a variety of genres over a web-based platform. We now have consistency of integration and technology across the grade levels. As David mentioned, having coherence and consistency across the whole group can be tremendously helpful. They also spoke to increased collaboration, both within a class, across classes, and with students in other schools. One thing that was new was looking at how do we manage field trips? It's often a big part of a student's life. And this year, I would say that our buildings were tremendously creative in finding ways for students to have really meaningful learning opportunities through online field trips. One of the challenges for, at an elementary level, is you want to be establishing a strong classroom community. Our teachers found ways to do that. And every student having a device made it possible for us to have every child really come in and feel part of the community. Next slide, Jay. Going back to the concept of the challenges that some of our younger learners had, we recognized that it was very, very important to find a balance for how much time kids were on screens and off screens. And we made changes in scheduling throughout the year. We made sure that we provided opportunities for students to learn in ways that would not have them on a screen, especially for our youngest learners. The technology, as been mentioned before, allowed for differentiation, for teachers to individualize instruction. And as mentioned before, Moat allowed teachers to leave voice notes for students. We've also had our teachers using different applications to record video of themselves so that students can go back to that. So it really, we're cloning our teachers through the use of videos so that kids have access to them more and more. And next slide, Jay. Professional learning has come up several times, not only in the last year and in the challenges that we've had during COVID, but always professional learning is a huge part of what happens in schools. However, we did learn a lot about professional learning in the last 15 months. It's always important to be flexible, even more so now. We needed to be adjusting what we were doing constantly to meet the demands of what the teachers need, what vendors were offering. Everyone was in constant change. We learned that our teachers, well, I shouldn't say we learned, because we've always known this, but learned even more that teachers really, really appreciate and will take advantage when they have choice about what is offered to them. So on our Flex Wednesdays, there were often a menu of options for teachers. And it was mentioned before that many sessions were led by our instructional coaches, by some of our teachers, by our Google Apps team, as well as through our two BOCs and through some of our vendors. The teachers would often have a choice of what they could go to, therefore building their skills and what would make the most difference for them. We learned that building internal capacity and that professional learning was tremendously important. And again, having a wide variety of options for teachers. And universally, I've heard that they found the opportunities from learning from their colleagues, from their peers, had the most impact. And so moving forward, that's something that we want to be sure that we continue to offer. There's a tremendous amount of internal expertise, and we want to be sure that that is taken advantage of. Next slide, Jay. Thank you. This is one you've seen before. We presented this last winter. To give you an idea, again, of the kinds of choice, the breadth of things that were offered, these were the topics that were offered just in the fall on our Flex Wednesdays. And again, if you look in here, you're going to see a mix of technology-based learning and high-quality instructional-based learning. So the topics around assessment were going on before COVID. They will continue beyond COVID, as will all of the technology learnings. Thanks, Jay. Next one. So I'm going to hand off to Jay at this point. He's going to talk with you a little bit more about where we're going. So we've had an opportunity to talk about where we are, what we've learned, and now Jay's going to share with you where we're headed.
Thank you so much, Mary, and thank you to my colleagues, Allison, David, and all the other colleagues who helped put together this wonderful presentation. So as we continue, we want to think about where are we headed? So again, just to reframe the conversation, we've talked about where are we? How we got here and what we've learned along the way, and where are we headed? So thinking about network access, currently, there are more plans to improve our infrastructure. And as I alluded to before, we do have a, we have put a lot of energy and effort into looking at our Wi-Fi diagrams, recalibrating all of our Wi-Fi across all campuses. So I'm happy to say that many of those are only going to be strengthened. However, I am proud to say that because of your partnership and participation in the budget process, we are able to install and configure outdoor wireless access points at all of our campuses. So this is something that I know has been talked about for many, many years. It's been something that has been a concern and came to light in great detail during the pandemic when we went to outside classrooms. So I am happy to say that we are going to add a lot of those access points over the coming months and will be in place by the fall. There are also going to be additional access points added to cover areas that we found during the survey that perhaps were not as strong as we anticipated based on the actual return of students. So with anecdotal information that was provided by tickets and provided by teachers and students, we've made adjustments to look at all of our access points and make additional devices as necessary. Speaking of devices, the plan is to get back on some type of a replacement cycle with all of our boards, our desktops, our laptops, iPads and Chromebooks. And this is something that has also been discussed by my predecessor and based on the history of the organization, as Dr. Harrison spoke about earlier, that we have been trying to get to a point of a sufficient network environment and infrastructure. And in order to do so, we do need to have better equipment and newer equipment for our staff and students to be able to use. So some of those end-of-life devices that I referred to will be replaced in the current budget cycle before they fail ultimately. And we are going to purchase additional internal components, RAM and hard drives, to extend the lives of our desktop devices and laptops where possible. So we're trying to extend our devices by giving them a little bit more life out of them so that we can actually offset the budget in the coming years. So where are we headed in terms of student devices? Well, as my colleagues spoke about our middle school and how wonderful the program has been, and I'm fortunate to have been a part of that process, but I cannot take all the credit by any means because a lot of it was laid before I got here. We are going to plan to purchase another 150 Chromebooks per year following that lifecycle. By doing that, we're going to be able to infuse the district with newer devices and provide the device a lifespan with the same student over a number of years. Our high school, we are going to be looping up our eighth-grade devices into our ninth grade. And by doing so, we will also be planning on moving some of the newest devices into the hands of our sixth graders. So our sixth graders will have devices that are in year two, and our high school students will have the final year of those devices as well. The 10th through 12th graders will be getting one-to-one high school devices thanks to the purchase of those devices that were purchased as a result of COVID. By purchasing all those new devices, we're able to provide one-to-one in our high school. Speaking about our IMS and IHS campus, we are also going to add additional charging stations, as you see as an example on the right over here. And they include the high school atrium, the cafeteria, and the library. And we actually have piloted the caf, I'm sorry, the library already, and it has been a great addition to our one-to-one program. And it was identified under the lessons learned, if you will, from the one-to-one. And our K5 students, our youngest students, were going to return to tubs and charging stations where possible, but they're not going to be the plastic tubs that we're used to. We're looking into a new model which allows for ease of removal of devices as well as storage. They are also easily stored on ledges instead of on the floor, which helps for tripping hazards, which many of my colleagues have brought to light. However, in our 4-5 building, Main Street, we are going to provide an opportunity for project-based one-to-one where students could feasibly take home devices on an as-needed basis. There's more development coming in this process. And with the partnership of Choice and the edutech team, we will be providing that information shortly. So where are we with professional learning and where are we headed? So Mary did a great job explaining, as well as my colleagues, where we were with professional learning in terms of pre-COVID, I'm sorry, quarantine. But I'd like to talk about what happened pre-COVID. When I first came into Irvington community, I was a part of the technology committees in all the buildings. It allowed us to inform professional learning decisions, purchasing, as well as pilot opportunities. And that's something that I would like to reestablish in the coming year. We were fortunate to have many vendors as partners in our trainings in the last 18 months. Prior to COVID, we didn't have many of those, and that's something that I'm looking to pursue. And many of these vendor-led trainings are free of charge as a result of being part of their communities and their certification programs that they provide. They actually provide a lot of trainings at no cost, many of which are webinars and on-demand, which are accessible 24 hours a day for our staff and students. And ultimately, we are continuing to build capacity internally. And I can speak to my Google PD partners who were really, really rock stars in terms of supporting all of our staff. And they didn't just support Google because everything was on a Google device. They supported every single component within the Google atmosphere, if you will. And some of the other rock stars that came to light were teachers that were the ones that came to us as early adopters of programs. And with that early adoption, they were the ones that came and said, "I'd like to lead a presentation on NearPod. I'd like to lead a presentation on Perdeck." And some of those individuals actually became certified under those organizations and have micro credentials, which leads me to my next point. So micro credentials is something that's been new in the education technology community and the learning communities of schools everywhere. And Google, Microsoft, Moat, Kami, NearPod, you name it, these companies are looking to build in their own certification programs, which simply means that the teacher goes and they show that they are an expert. And as a result, they get a little micro credential that can go on the bottom of their email. It can be a poster on their wall. And it's something that is truly looked at as a increase to their resume and overall their experience. And that's something that I believe that Irvington can do in recognizing our hard-working teachers who go out of their way to get some of these credentials. And that leads us to the end of the presentation. And at this point, I'd like to open the floor for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think everyone will have questions, but, you know, a couple threshold items that I had that I think would be helpful to hear a little bit more about. And maybe that, you know, David or Allison or even Ms. Ellis could speak to just in terms of the BYOD experience versus the one-to-one experience and what people saw as pros and cons in each. You know, especially, you know, if we're talking about, you know, a rollout of a one-to-one initiative potentially into the high school where, you know, many students already have devices that they're used to using themselves. So I think it'd be helpful to hear, you know, a little bit more, you know, on that front.
Sure, I'll be glad to provide some thinking and insight in, into what the recommendation would be. Typically, in an environment where you've shifted to a one-to-one environment, you ought, at the same time, move away from a BYOD environment. And that's done for a number of reasons. One is through an instructional lens and looking to be able to deliver instruction that is going to put students in the same type of experience and understanding that when you move from type of device to a different type of device, such as from a Chromebook to a PC to a Mac, you may have different types of user experience. So we want students to have common experiences. But equity also becomes something that really should be important to us. When we think about the types of experiences that we afford our students, you know, when we think about Go Fashion Learning, all of our students receive the same textbook. And if we're thinking that the environment is going to support one-to-one computing that's going to benefit instruction, I think it's appropriate that we afford our students the same type of device. So that, you know, when we think about the world of equity, we think about socioeconomic divides or priorities that may exist in different homes that may really be divergent, that we want to ensure that we don't have a student who's being looked at cross or teased because they're utilizing the school Chromebook versus someone that is using a Mac or a fancy PC or Surface device that their parents have been able to afford them. So we think that from an instructional standpoint, there's an equity component. But from a cultural standpoint, there is also an equity aspect that I have to be honest, that is very, very important to me as your superintendent of schools, especially in the light of all the diversity work that we're doing and seeking to provide equitable experiences for all of our students. And socioeconomics plays a role here. But we also have to understand families place priorities on their spending on different things. And that may not be a priority or something that's acceptable in some homes. So we need to be mindful of that. And then finally, when we think about maintenance and update and upkeep of devices and software, when we're utilizing a district device, we are centrally controlling them. We are able to push out updates to all of the district-owned devices. We are centrally controlling them, we are able to push out updates to all of the district owned devices and we do that remotely. And that when there is a challenge, when there's a break and fix situation. Our staff that Mr. Sotile referenced before has the ability to get hands on with a device. To be able to to make the fix on that device, it is if it's something that requires more extensive repair. Any responsible one to one model provides for keeps a stock knowing that. Devices are going to be replaced, devices are going to have to be loaned out while things are being repaired. So if a student comes in and it's not a quick fix. That literally our tech staff can hand them a loner Chromebook while that Chromebook is being fixed. In a BYOD model, we're hands off when it comes to other people's devices. We we don't have the capacity to be able to support them. And we don't want the liability of the attempt to try to fix someone else's device. So in a case where technology is going to be a center point of the learning experience or the teaching moment. And that a student who has a failed device and it's personally owned. There's going to be limited engagement from any of our district staff members to be able to support the student in that particular moment. So from from my vantage, and I certainly will defer to my colleagues. There's equity and having a continuity of instruction and looking at the the learning experience. Thinking of exposing all of our students to the same level of technical resources. And the equity from the standpoint of. You know, the the optics of who has which type of device and how that may be viewed among other students. And then finally, with BYOD, the mix of devices brings in some maintenance and. Concerns and challenges that would have to be continued to be navigated. I certainly defer to my colleagues for any other thinking on the subject.
Think you captured it all.
I mean, ob- obviously, you know, that would mark a shift, you know, especially, you know, at the. You know, I think the secondary level of students had the opportunity to bring their own device even this year during the pandemic. So, you know, I think it'd be, I don't know if the building leaders from, you know, either the schools have any any further thoughts in terms of. What they saw this year in terms of a BYOD scenario at the high school and and how. That may or may not have been successful because, you know, obviously we're talking about a shift, I think it'd be helpful to be informed by the learning we had. You know, over the last couple of years and and, you know, what I what I thinking is is driving this.
Yeah, so Jay, could you please promote Juliette and Matthew to be able to share some of their observations and thoughts on the topic? Yeah, Jay, if you could stop sharing as well, so we could see everybody in the group, please. Thank you. So Juliette, I see now that you've joined us, Matt's here as well. You know, certainly, and I love the the light fixture behind you, Matt, you have to share notes where you got that. But can you share some of your your observations and your thinking on the subject that Brian inquired about?
Sure, I'll begin and then Matt, by all means, please, please share also. I wanted to highlight, as David shared at the high school, we also had bins of Chromebooks prior to the pandemic in departments. And we did not have, not all departments had full sets of Chromebooks for each class. And that provided challenges, challenges in the learning experience. It's very powerful and it's been very powerful for every student. To have a device in their hands as we were able to provide during the pandemic. Students who didn't have a device of their own received one from the district. As David had shared and as we observed during this pandemic. District provided devices maintain their connectivity as students travel throughout the building. Not losing them as they go to the, you know, third floor of the science wing. And not all what all not all devices that students brought from home had that same level of connectivity maintenance as our district devices provide. As Jay has explained also and Dr. Harrison mentioned as well, not only. You know, do the district provided devices have the ability to be updated remotely. What the district is able to do, especially as we transition to one to one, the high school completely. Is the district is able to create a sort of app store where students are able to. Download and use the applications that they need, given the classes that they're taking. And so that is that is something that as we move one to one at the high school, that in talking to Jay, we are able to provide. As Dr. Harrison noted also, you know, having the one to one, you know. Again, here where students have forgotten their devices sometimes from home this year, which we observed. Because they didn't opt to borrow a one to one for the year. We would see them in the classrooms using their phones. And again, having the one to one, not only will students be able to have a loner device provided. If theirs is broken, but there will be some available for students to have should they forget them. And again, there will be that seamless transition and that common experience in the classroom, both from the teacher perspective. And from the student perspective. As Jay shared, we have a charging station now at the li- in the library. But we will have charging stations throughout the building. Again, something that we're unable to provide when students are bringing their own devices if they're not fully charged. And finally, you know, what we've talked about, since this is a transition and a shift. If if there comes a place, if if there is something identified where the curriculum demands are ever. Such that something other than a Chromebook is needed, we would work with the district to provide a device that would meet the needs for that program. If that if that, you know, ever came to light. And what we would highlight and say is that continued ongoing professional development, you know, will be important as we continue. To push out new applications and new updates. Matt, I know if there's something you would like to add as well with regard to observations and thoughts for moving forward.
Thank you, I I think you said it very well, Juliette, and and I thank you, Jay, what was a very strong presentation, very clear. Of course, thank you to the board and Dr. Harrison for your support. I guess, you know, the aspect that I I don't know that I've heard yet, that I think is valuable also to raise is that allowing. This one to a model to be district operated Chromebooks allows us to provide a safe learning experience. For our students because we can provide level oversight to student usage. And make sure that students are using their their devices responsibly, both for themselves and the way they interact with each other. And I just, I I find that comforting, knowing that we have that ability to sort of monitor and and make sure the students are making good decisions. You know, it's funny to hear you say Juliette, thinking about the experience that teachers and students had prior to the pandemic. I recall very clearly teachers advocating for more Chromebooks in the classroom, they needed more devices to help. To to push the communication between students in the room and to move things along now, you know, it's amazing how quickly we sort of just. Taking that for granted, that those days were what eighteen months ago and all of a sudden it seems like it's been ten years, but no question. Being able to have a consistent and constant. Experience technology for all students is been a real game changer for our students. And it allows everyone to access learning in the same way. Which I think really just wasn't the case prior to this, the shift, this would be, I could think what you would call one of those COVID silver linings.
Thank you all. So I I I have a lot of questions written down, but I don't want to start monopolizing the time, so I'll pass. The microphone over to the other trustees for their questions and then circle back at some point, so Dave.
Sure, um, thank you, I'm supposed to take this off when I ask questions, can I speak, right? So thank you so much for a very comprehensive presentation, very thoughtful, well put together. I have a couple of questions, one is. It would be interesting to see, since we're so connected with these devices, a usage report. Some kind of user, like how many hours were the computers used for amongst different, you know, school by school, say, or however you want to organize it. Whatever, but the idea of how often were these machines actually used? Second question was, I heard you say that you were moving to a new kind of tub. Last time we had a comprehensive discussion about technology. The we were moving for, this was an elementary school K through five piece where we were looking to expand from five computers in a room to ten. As per the, I think it was like twenty seventeen or something. Where it would give, it would really move us into that flexible computing model that was the the ideal for the district. And I I also just in that same token wanted to, I I believe, at least help to clarify for myself and maybe some others in the room, that when we say one to one. It's it seems, you know, like we're moving to like everybody learning from a computer all the time, but I think the the one to one pieces in reference to the flexible computing model. So that teachers have the ability to pull them out and use them in a one to one opportunity when they can. But the. So the tubs is still going to be ten in a room in the elementary schools, are we looking to get, because we didn't really talk about the elementary piece too much. Is it going to be one to one in elementary as well in K through three or four and five? And if so, is that tub situation changing?
So, it's so great, so Jay, I think we can have conversation, maybe we can follow up about it. Report down the road and I saw Jay put his head down, I'm assuming he was taking a note just as I was. When we think about one to one, I think David, you raise, you make a great point and it's that that educator in you and that. That idea of saying one to one doesn't mean we're on devices all the time, it means that you have the capacity, right? To be able to utilize technology in any given class within given student. School day, so I I thank you for for mentioning that. When we think about our elementary environment, we're looking at two different models realistically. To have the capacity with the inventory that we have before us, to be able to be one to one in a classroom. So that we would have enough devices that it would be able to be utilized if if desired. When we're thinking about Main Street School, there's a a reference on the slide and and Ms. Chapnik and teachers have some really creative ideas and thinking about. Not only supporting that transition to the middle school, but encouraging some deeper learning opportunities, utilizing resources that will be available through the. The school services that there would be opportunities when students are engaged in longer range, deep learning projects that would have a technology component. The students would be essentially be able to sign out a device one to one to support that learning experience. So we see it as one increasing the use of the device to support learning specifically. But also serving as a transition to the middle school like we do in a lot of other areas. Jay, you can, I think, speak to the difference in the type of device, storage units that you're looking at. As opposed to the tub model that we had used in the past.
Sure, so the model that I was referring to is something that we found because of. How to store the devices was a concern. So with buckets, they were stored on the floor and they were oftentimes put under a smartboard or they were, you know, wires across the room to be able to plug them in. So in order to prevent some of that concern, that was something we wanted to find a device that could actually be put up on a shelf. And so the model that we're looking for is actually also easy to unplug and replug as needed. Devices coming out of the bucket, quote unquote. Was a lot harder to do so, and so for students at all age groups, it was an easier way to do that. And it's just a simple unplug and replug.
Yeah, I I would say from my perspective and having been involved in some of the early. Device distribution in the last school year. They they just were not very user friendly, yes, they were able to be secured, we could have buckets that we can move them around. But when it just, they weren't well organized, that you could certainly put the device in, but the cables all became, power cords became entangled. So what Jay is talking about is a system that'd be fixed in in the classroom that would have direct access to charging to make it. To improve the user experience, but also just to promote a safer environment.
The 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 real focus of that question was really that the ideas in in especially in the younger grades, that the ideas that the the rooms still want to have ten computers so that they can.
At at least, a minimum, yeah, so there would be opportunities certainly for more, so as long as the inventory supported it. When we look at where we're we're headed, you know, that certainly, you know, there's conversation about devices aging out. And we're going to assess that need and the usage as we move forward, you know, we're not saying that elementary kids are going to be. Utilizing them with the frequency that a middle school or high school students are. Where possible, we're going to set outfit classrooms for one to one, but recognizing. That there's not going to necessarily be need and as we have devices that begin to age out, we can redistribute them accordingly in the district.
Alright, so the the third, I have two more, one quite, one more, I guess, comments, thoughts, questions, where you can take them, however you do, take them. I was very enthused to hear that the ongoing professional development will. Start to point us in the direction of doing more project oriented work with the technology, because there's such a world of, and I know this year. And I salute all the teachers for diving into the deep end of the pool real quick. So it'll be fun to watch how that expands in terms of engaging kids in a more sophisticated manner over time. So thank you for talking about that. And then I guess the last piece is is carrying those computers back and forth, as I know some students are doing now versus storing them in the school. Et cetera, et cetera, like I know right now, and I don't know if it's just a temporary thing, but at like Main Street School, for instance, I know kids going back and forth with the computers all day long. And not using it every day all the time and so forth, and so I'm just, it made me think about, you know, is there a store, can they leave them in school in a locker? Or is there like a way that they don't have to transport these things all over the place?
So the idea would be that the students would be bring be bringing them back and forth with them at the secondary schools, elementary schools would only be. You know, in that particular pilot project that I mentioned that Joyce is interested in implementing. You know, you think about many of our resources becoming digital, so we always used to talk about backpack weight. Right, I remember back when I was a a school principal, you know, there was all the debates around, you know, the the weight of students' backpacks. Because all the books they're carrying back, well, there's fewer and fewer books that that are there, yes, and the wheelie backpacks, right? But students would be taking them back and forth, we provide protective cases. That that we purchase with that that are light, easier, they they're tagged and linked with the the students. Devices with their names on them, so you know, it may not the cool, be the coolest looking thing in the world, but every student does get one of those to help protect the device. And yes, and so, and then of course, we extend families the opportunity to purchase that relatively affordable insurance that covers the device should it be broken. You know, coming from from a dad who has a a child who's a sophomore in high school and a one to one Chromebook school. He doesn't think twice about it, goes in and out of his backpack every day, just like it's a notebook or a binder or textbook. And, you know, he simply plops it down on the kitchen table when he's doing his homework and it's become an extension of a learning experience. You know, going back to my own beliefs about equity and the like. Certainly, we have other devices in the house, but when it comes to the learning. Ninety percent of the time, he's doing his schoolwork is directly on on the Chromebook. So I've seen it from a practical side as as well as that theoretical pedagogical, you know, system that we're looking to employ here.
Awesome, super, thank you, that's it for me.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Okay, hi, everyone, I think similar to Brian, I'm going to start out with some questions, but I probably am going to have to loop around again. But I'd like to give other trustees a chance to ask questions after I ask some. I'd like to say in the beginning that I do see silver linings here from this report. The most important one for me is the commitment to providing outdoor wifi. Which is something we've been discussing because truly the pandemic required more outdoor learning. We have a new outdoor learning pavilion and my hope is that. As I saw the tents and the chairs outside, that in future discussions, we'll be talking about more use of outdoor resources. Particularly as our secondary campus has direct access to Irvington Woods and the O'Hara Nature Center. Okay, the other silver lining, bear with me as I go through my notes. It was really great to hear about the updates in infrastructure. Specifically, if we have a power outage that we are covered and that other districts don't have that. It was great to hear about the pandemic pivot and response. The data privacy updates that preceded our. The pandemic seemed to have continued to improve during the pandemic. And professional development that before the pandemic, we had problems contemplating how we were going to provide it. Came about through this emergency status and our Wednesdays. But this is where I would like to make a distinction. I think there are lessons learned during a pandemic that will not necessarily be entirely applicable. I think there are lessons learned during a pandemic that will not necessarily be entirely applicable. To a fully open school schedule, I'm not gonna call it post pandemic because we do not know what we're facing next year. However, from my perspective, and this is another wonderful thing about tonight's presentation from um. Allison Daly and David Sotile, when I look back at my notes from the past two years. In October of two thousand and eighteen, we had a very great report from um our previous tech director. About where we thought we were going. By the end of, uh by June of two thousand and nineteen, plans had been made for a one to one rollout. We go up to September two thousand and nineteen, we have the one to one rollout in the middle school. By December of two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Sotile had put out like a draft survey and gotten some information, I went back to look at notes that are reflected. Um from that time and he started to talk about time savings. And what I hear in the report tonight is the time savings are even greater than what was discussed in December two thousand and nineteen. Then we were only talking about time savings from when you go in and out of a classroom and get your devices. Now we're learning about time savings through assessment, through shared work and things to this extent. With that being said, though. I still maintain, and this was my position in December of two thousand and nineteen before the pandemic. That the original pilot program of one to one. Was de- designed to be put into Irvington Middle School. That's my recollection and that's what I see to a great extent in many of the records from that time. Of course, that conversation was interrupted again by the ongoing pandemic. But now we're coming out of that time, so here are some questions I have. When we talk about moving this forward to the high school. One question would be, among all the high school students, I don't know if these numbers are available. How many opted for Chromebooks and how many did not, is that like even a number or a percentage that we have?
Jay, it was approximately sixty percent of the high school students?
That's correct.
Okay, that's great. Now, in the information that we got tonight, I'm just gonna run back some numbers, that's from page nine of the presentation. In addition to Chromebooks, which we're discussing, certainly those were distributed K through twelve to every student, we have five hundred and sixteen desktops. Um fifty-five laptops plus an additional thirty-five laptops and seventy iPads. I'm trying to understand how many of those devices are at the high school for instructional purposes.
Jay, can you speak to the distribution of those uh particular devices?
Slide nine. So. Give me a second, I'm pulling up the information. And speaking of Chromebooks, I can tell you there's upwards of two hundred Chromebooks that were um associated to nine through twelve.
Okay.
So can you talk about though, Jay, the distribution of uh laptops in in the high school? Laptops and or desktops in in the high school, so when we think of desktops. Many of them are in um professional staff workspaces and library. And then also in the computer lab, um but aside from those particular allocations. What is available at the secondary schools from a a laptop standpoint?
From a laptop standpoint, we have uh devices that are in our science department, which are used for our probes and our our data analytics that are provided. We also have uh laptops that are used in our computer science programs, which are uh available to. Our PLTW departments as well.
And then I would, and then I would add that um the photography lab, uh we have Macs that are utilized. There um as well as computers that are utilized, as as you said, in in the STEM program with the architecture and engineering.
Oh, okay, so the Chromebooks um are used for. A number of content areas and number of applications, but they aren't able to do everything that needs to be done. As um as Chris and Jay have pointed out, for some of the more advanced science courses and art courses.
Okay, so this is what I just want to suggest and ask about, you know, I I would suspect that. For ninth grade, based on, you know, um what what were, what is considered to be next steps. That there's nothing in ninth grade that Chromebooks are insufficient for. Would we agree?
I I would say that when we think holistically of our instruction, with the exception of specialty areas. When we think of students that are moving from English classes, social studies classes. With um in their work that is happening in science classrooms and I'm seeing it firsthand. That the Chromebooks are are certainly beyond adequate, sufficient um for the general work that is done in those classes. So I would say that I would go extend that um beyond ninth grade, Beth. But there's um certain programs uh courses. Where there are applications, where there's particular software that is utilized, that is PC based. Or Mac based, um that is utilized, and in those particular cases. We provide for shared devices in the classroom space for our students to use.
Right, and they're actually, so for art, I think it's in the classrooms and it's always there. Why not art, I mean, yes, art and also.
So there's, yes.
So this is the only thing I want to ask, is any thought being given to using next year, you know, we have so many seminal things happening. Um Ms. Ellis is um departing at some point, we have a new assistant superintendent of instruction and curricular, um Ms. Duffy coming in. Um we're gonna be saying farewell to Mr. Sammelson, we're gonna have a new assistant principal at some point, you know, to be identified coming in. Um we have um Mrs. GM who came in, you know, right before the pandemic and then had to put many of her. Fo- focus, much of her focus and pivot for everyone in that building on the pandemic. That I would suggest and wonder if anyone has thought about next year. As being a time to really thinking about what technology is best for our high school students. You know, I'm I'm willing to. Look at ninth grade is different because there was a point made here. About easing the transition while you're using the same devices that you used in eighth grade and we've all talked about here about the eighth to ninth grade transition process. But I want to just raise here, and I'm not asking for answers right now, is that the possibility is that what we learn. In a coming to the end of the pandemic period may show us. Not way in the future, but over the course of next year. That we should be looking at technology that is more specifically. Oriented towards giving everybody, so address your equity issue, the best possible. Rigorous experiences and opportunities to engage in those experiences, not only. In the classroom, because that's what we've mostly talked about tonight. How did this create classroom-based synergies? But also when you go home to do additional work. I'm just asking for some thought to that. Um I also do want to build on what. Mister, our friend David said, David Graber. This idea of carrying the items back and forth with the Chromebook, the Chromebook, I've discussed this with um Mr. Stromwasser in the past, they weigh about six pounds. And when you look at your middle school students, you're talking about kids who in eighth grade could be as young as twelve. Um and we know that adding weight to backpacks. The younger you are and what percentage that is of your weight is more directly impacted to s- uh health impacts. If it is possible, um since the report tonight is mostly about using the Chromebooks in the classrooms, right, in the schools. To somehow set up a situation where the kids can keep them at the building. And I think I'd like to cede the floor to Michael.
Actually, I just wanted to follow up on that to to clarify. Uh I I think you were talking about leaving them in the building if they so choose, that if a student wanted to. Bring it home because that was their choice, they'd have that option, but that there'd also be an option. For the student to keep it in school if they so, if they wanted to do so.
Yeah, that would, I I I'm assuming from the secondary model and and um I think, you know, I'd love to ask, you know, our. Our administrators and about this, that. You do need the 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 students to be carrying them throughout the day because that's one of the time savings that we're talking about. So with that in mind, I don't know what the complicated aspect would be, like, would you have? With the charging stations, would you be able to keep them in the locker, would you put them into a locked charging station, I'm not.
I would say there would be some logistic impossibilities in that and some liability issues, so. Um you know, we certainly uh, you know. Uh want to be considered the concerns, I think uh the Chromebook, the weight of a Chromebook with a case is about three pounds rather than six. Um is my recollection, um but I think that back and forth and the idea of. You know, coming back in and the device being where it was left, the device being charged when you come in the next morning. Um poses some real management issues and concerns that would surface. And I I and I would think, you know, probably, you know, David and Allison could speak to some of that from. You know, just their own experience at at the middle school and, you know, not having said that we've done that, but just projecting where the potential. Um concerns would be, would come in, um I just don't know where and how that storage would be. Happen because we have such limited capacity for storage as it is today.
Right, so I guess the charging stations take care of the charging and possibly a locked locker would be safe enough? If it's like eighty percent charge at the end of the day?
Yeah, I I I think the issue would be, I don't think we'd have the ability for. A significant number of students to charge their devices, you know, at once, I think. Do we know how many charging stations we'd have and?
I I couldn't put a number on it, but what I would suggest is let's step back and think about things from that policy level. And and if you're of the mind that you want to be able to support. The expansion of the program as has been recommended, then let's let, let's stay at that level and then. The, you know, we can certainly turn to our administrators and come up with the necessary plans. To be able to work with stu- with students and families to to be able to support the needs that surface and. So let's kind of stay at that level, thinking, you know, the experiences and resources we want for our kids. And then let's let the, then where there's practical, the implementation piece, we'll sort that out and we'll come up.
Well said, okay, I'm gonna cede the floor to Mr. Hannah.
Uh I think some of my initial comments will echo uh Ms. Proper and uh I I. Thank you uh for the presentation and I really love hearing from our building leaders. Miss your voices at times and uh kind of very reassuring uh what you shared and addressing some of my. Uh concerns coming into uh this presentation, so so thank you for what you've shared. Uh it's great to hear about a lot of the infrastructure improvements in terms of saturation and the future of having it. You know, uh any problem areas further addressed and the expansion to be outdoors, which. Would have been great if somehow we could have had that this year, but that'll be good going forward. Great to hear about the internet backup, I I definitely heard about schools and districts that had to close this year when their internet went out, uh so to know that that may not be. It's hard not to separate a lot of the concerns and questions and it's uh thinking from. The hybrid experience we just went through, which hopefully is not the experience we're going forward into, and that means that what our needs are technology wise differ. Because uh it's not the same demands uh of hybrid and remote learning when we have all our kids in school. Um so uh you'll help me if some of my questions are still sort of stuck. In the year we just had versus the year we're going into.
Hard to avoid that.
Yeah. I'm especially, one of the things that, you know, hearing from our building leaders and from uh from our administrators in in general with this presentation is. Uh around the the professional learning and um, you know, the. Uh the flexibility, the 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 balance of uh, you know, internal leaders and and external trainers. You know, long before COVID, that's been a concern of mine as we expand the number of devices and that just exploded this year, so. I'm glad that there was the that opportunity. Um so here's an area where I'm stuck in last year and and maybe it's not the same going forward, but it's around Chromebooks. Um you know, I think uh in 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 my field and and I think it's similar here, you. You create uh sort of your framer for why you're going to go forward with a certain approach and that approach a couple of years ago was. Uh you know, the introduction of Chromebooks, the introduction of Chromebooks is one to one in the middle school and suddenly we just. Phenomenally expanded the number of Chromebooks we had and I think. My sense is we put them to a use that they were not adequate for, they're they're not strong. And and you know, Jay, please correct me, but you know, I don't see them as being particularly strong with video, with with multitasking. And anecdotally, I I have not had positive feedback about them uh this year. So it's really made me reticent, uh but I recognize that the uses that we will have for them going forward are not the same going forward. Perhaps not as demanding, perhaps they do return to being adequate with the lesser. More general educational purposes that we're thinking going forward, I'll stop there for a second.
Yeah, I would say, I'll, Jay, I'll invite you to respond in a second, but. Um I think you kind of hit the nail on the head, you know, like, we went into this and thinking of the the model of of one to one in the middle school. Um anticipating expansion to the high school uh in time. And it was by no means thinking that we are going to be streaming video for four or five hours a day. It was for the use of collaboration around devices, the occasional Google Meet. Uh which as we can, we've seen over the last year and a half, how the whole Google Meet platform has. Done an about face and been expanded with all kinds of new tricks and bells and whistles. Um but it has been in and around that idea of collaboration, um the idea of access to open source documents. Accessing the internet and expanding the walls of the classroom. Um by no means was the Chromebook intended to be something that was going to be streaming video. Um at all points and times, recognizing that there not only were there limitations there. We know that globally there were internet issues, we know that when kids, a lot of kids had troubles at home with Chromebooks. When they would enter the school building, we were unable to replicate the challenges in the schools. Because it had something to do with the wifi differentials in in the home environment and. The bandwidth in the home versus what has been really touted as a much improved system here in our school. Um so very clearly, when we think of the day to day use. We believe that the Chromebook is certainly an adequate tool, an instructional tool that will benefit our kids. But again, there are those courses, as I referenced before, that require higher level computing. Specific um programs or software that only work on certain types of devices. That would not be able to support this need, um Jay, um any other thoughts related to, you know. The adequacy or appropriateness of a Chromebook?
No, I would just add that um really what Google has done in in recognition of this is to improve their platforms. So that these devices can handle more of the typical tasks that we saw. Um prior to this, there was not a need for as much multitasking or large or long video um. Conferencing and essentially, those are the things that Google has now said. This device should have been able to do that and here's what we're going to do, they've enlightened the the applications, they've. Rebranded and re- not rebranded, I'm sorry, reconfigured and retooled the environment so that. They do function at lower levels of latency um and issues that may be in lower, lower wifi. They've even added offline access that wasn't previously available, so I think that. In recognition of what Google has done and and the way that we were thinking about these devices pre-pandemic. Um I do believe that this is something that we can support. And to Dr. Harrison's point, you know, and part of the budget process was to replace some of those model computers that. Are specific to those uh departments, for example, photo uh lab that will be replaced, the PLT laptop, PLTW laptops. And desktops that will be replaced that will support those organizations and needs. Um and so really, I think that we are gonna see a new use case for what the Chromebook could be used. In the future, you know, I wouldn't, again, I I, you know, when when Beth said before, post pandemic, I agree, I don't know if we're post, but. Wherever that future may be, and I believe that that's something that these devices can definitely handle.
So so Jay, um a point of clarity, you know, we we've talked a lot about the professional development that we. So, so Jay, um, a point of clarity, you know, we, we've talked a lot about the professional development that we. Afforded our faculty and staff over the past. Year and a half with respect to, to technology in general, Chromebooks, the various applications that are out there. Um, but essentially we've taken, prepared our faculty and staff. And then indirectly our students to become proficient in Chromebook computing one point O. But when we step back, there's like a whole nother realm of. Chromebooking, shall we say, if that can be a verb, that, that you, there is much super. There are super capacities or expanded capacities and potential that exist. Within a Chromebook that we're only going to begin to tap into. Um, because we haven't even begun to focus on that level. So when we think about limitations. There's more potential in this affordable two hundred fifty to three hundred dollar device. And Jay, I don't know if you. Want to speak to some of that capacity there?
Sure. Um, so again, in light of what Google and, um, the ed tech world really saw. Was the need for screencasting and Google actually built it into the latest operating system. And as long as the device is within the, um, expiration date that Google has determined. All devices actually get that ability and that's something that was not available. Or even thought about as a need before.
It's pushable into older devices?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Did you say it was pushable into older devices? I missed that.
It goes up to, uh, as long as the device can reach version ninety, um, that's what Google has actually allowed for. Um, basically any device to be able to, to support it. Uh, you know, touch devices are now capable of doing even more capacitive and, um. You know, detailed work that mimic what an iPad can do. And so Google is realizing that these are. Again, those are two hundred fifty, three hundred dollar devices that can now be used to challenge, you know, the bigger, uh, technologies out there. And I think that again, we don't know what the potential is until we can face what. Google is giving us. I mean, Google is giving us more opportunity. They're listening to the feedback of all educators and. You know, I, I think that was evidenced as to what Google meet look like, you know, before and what Google meet looks like right now, you know, um.
So here's the question though. Here, here's the question because, uh, I, I use plenty of technology and. Your Chromebooks are on a lesser scale, right? I mean, that's a fact. When three years ago, four years ago, we talked about Macs versus Chromebooks. I remember I brought it up. And I think Michael, you actually looked at me and said, that's not a good, affordable idea. Right? It's, we want those computers, but they're not, it's not affordable. We can't afford to buy Macs for everybody and as, as we're expanding this piece.
Time change though.
Yeah, correct. But how, how do we then? Based on what you're saying, Jason, right? And I, I want to believe in that future of, of computing and that push model and all that stuff. Though there's a, there's a, a, a growing, I don't, I don't sit there because I, I feel personally that. Going forward after the, the, the pandemic, we're not streaming five hours of video and. It's really going to get back to that concept that the, the principals were talking about, which is that feedback cycle and that really good like sort of. Uh, ground level work that moves education forward, right? I just wonder how we can, if we're moving towards this concept of one to one and flexible, you know, really in realizing that flexible model. How we sell what you're suggesting, and I use the word sell quotes, right, to the public who views Chromebooks as less than good. Right? What, whether we say it here and discuss that is one thing, but how do we take that to the street and say? Look, kids are get, are having these Chromebooks. This is what we're doing. We're moving in. Here's why they're excellent. The stuff that you started just to do that now, Jason, right? Like, so I wonder if. You know, because I know there's a lot of feedback coming from people who are, you know, not thrilled with Chromebooks, but yet they work really well.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, uh, uh, and I think some of it does come down to some, some quality communication. So I, I appreciate that feedback. And, you know, and actually as we're talking, I, I'm, you know, I'm thinking about where we go and, and I think about. Where we are today, um, with, with the devices and understanding that. What we have before us today is an opportunity, maybe one of the silver linings. And that we have the opportunity to move forward and to continue to explore and evaluate this model. Evaluate the use of the devices. And we know, and as Jay referenced in his, in the slide deck. You know, a typical Chromebook is going to last like mechanically like three to five years and, uh. A laptop will last a, a year, two or three longer than that, but the price point is two to three times the price of a Chromebook, right? So when we step back and we think about where we are, we have investment in the life of these devices. We have a number of devices that as of now, say that the end of that, that user life with Google, they. The mechanically, so to speak, the device could still work beyond that. But what's happens is Google stops supporting it. And then when Google stops supporting it, you don't get all the updates. And then from our perspective as a school. You don't worry about necessarily it breaking, but what you worry about is not getting the secure, updated security patches. So you have a, once the device leaves our schools, you worry about. The security levels outside of the school environment. In the school environment, I think we feel pretty secure. So when we start to think about the devices starting to phase out over the next year or two. What we have here is the opportunity to consider, well, if we are liking how the one to one model is going. Do we continue to evaluate the benefits of the Chromebook? Do we can look to pilot other opportunities with different types of devices? Whether a PC device, a Mac device, and in doing so, well, how do you manage that? How do you support it? How do you pay for it? So we could start to tier those opportunities. Um, and see where our priorities lie, you know, right now, I would say, and clearly, you know, I'm enthusiastic about expanding. The Chromebook experience to our high scores. When I get into the dollars and cents of what that investment would look like in a MacBook. Uh, and being one who loves a MacBook, I, I start to think we could spend money in, in maybe better ways. Than that or in different ways, um, that would have greater impacts on kids. But I think with the board's support and looking to expand the Chromebook. Model to the high school, we can then make a commitment to looking at over time evaluating. The effect of the device on education and student learning. And then the benefits and pros and cons of exploring other types of devices in that.
You know, I, I think, you know, that's important and that was. One of the things, you know, that I was thinking about, you know, we have in here that there's. A thousand devices that may need to be updated a year from now. And I think before. We go ahead and, you know, replace that entire inventory, we need to have. A follow up discussion about, you know, what is our experience with the Chromebook in a more normal. Uh, setting, you know, hopefully this next year, we're not going to be streaming video five hours a day. To a Chromebook and we'll have the opportunity to evaluate the Chromebook in a, in its more intended use. And see how, you know, how the students and the staff. Uh, are able to use them and if it is still meeting the needs or not, so we can have a discussion. You know, that next year before we buy even more devices and, and see where we want to go. I think that's an important thing. To do, but I think, you know, as Michael and Beth said, I said, you know, unfortunately, we haven't had. You know, that much of a quote unquote, normal experience, uh, with the devices. So it's a little hard to know. You know, exactly, you know, what, you know, where we're going to land on them.
Yeah. And so when we step back and you, you use the word make, right? So. Google has, especially through the pandemic, has pushed the life of machines to go further. And knowing that the machines are still in many cases working, a lot of school districts are in four year replacement cycles and plans. And kind of look the other way with those other concerns that we raised. Um, but when we, when we look at where we are, I think we have, we have the opportunity. We have the devices, let's, I, I would suggest that we look at that expansion. And then in doing so, let's look at the capacity, let's look at the effects on, on teaching and learning. And, and really leverage the experiences that we've had this year. Um, you know, we would have never expected our teachers would have had this magnitude and depth of professional learning. Um, and really whether it was thrust upon them or, or invited. Um, we, we didn't prepare for that either. And, but our teachers have a whole different wheelhouse of skills right now. That wasn't even a consideration before. And so, but we want to talk about Google. And all these different applications and thinking about what things that Mary referenced, all the different things that Allison was sharing before. Um, but to think about just like using Google Classroom at the elementary level, like we weren't anywhere near there two years ago. Um, so we're in a different place today and, and we have the devices and I think there's the opportunity to really. To see what the power is and the impacts on learning, to see what that replacement cycle is going to look like, um, a year from now. And then begin to plan accordingly. And I think there's a comfort level with the devices. I think with the board's support, we can develop what the policy is in and around how we're going to utilize them. That we will manage the communication and, and identify the rationale behind our thinking and our recommendations as we're looking to. Move into the high school and then we'll evaluate where, where we are, uh, a year from now as we're going through the, or. Little less than a year from now as we're going through the budget process really to look at what our needs would be to continue in model X. But what we, what we'd want to do possibly in model Y and contemplate those options.
You know, I, I think, I think as you said, uh, the budget, you know, timing is important that it, it's really a conversation that would. You know, have to happen, uh, February or earlier, you know, before we start to get into talking about budget and planning. So. You know, I'm, I'm, I guess, you know, putting that out there is, uh, you know, already one of our meeting topics for. Uh, next year, we haven't even gotten there yet, but I, I do think it's important. That, uh, you know, if we're going to, you know, push these devices, you know, out to be used in a, you know, more. Traditional setting that we do have a follow up on it and see whether it also may be that the replacement cycle is. Changes between now and then, or it also may be that some of those devices that have. That may be aging out would still be used appropriately at. Uh, maybe the lower grades because they won't need all those updates. I mean, maybe they'll just rotate devices. So I do think we need to look at. The inventory and think creatively before we just say, okay, this one is up, let's replace it.
Turned around, doesn't mean that we're going to turn around and spend thirty thousand dollars and buy X, Y and Z. No, no, no doubt. And, um. I don't, we're going off and I, I think, Michael, I, I think you had another.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions more, but, uh, I do, I do want to echo, uh. Uh, enthusiastic consideration of our board president in terms of how we look forward to this next year. Um, and related, and just to, to piggyback on what you're saying, Brian, um, you know. And I also want to give a hat tip to, uh, to Dave who kind of pointed this out to me. The district survey that you mentioned at the top of the meeting that's going out. I really appreciate the adjustments that have been made to it. Uh, I kind of wish we had that data coming into this meeting in terms of the relate, how, you know, the adjustments that it relates to. Technology, support, um, lessons learned, uh, but. That being said, I think we find ourselves that you have an opportunity, I won't be here as a part of this conversation, except as a community member. Uh, next year with, with the new personnel, with, uh, this sort of. Adjustment between this year and next year, the devices that we bought for this past year and will have for next year. Uh, to, to assess. So I hope you take the information that I hope people will, will broadly and considerably give with this current survey. And I know in the past, you've tried to get the survey out more in that January, February cycle. So hopefully can even help. You know, if, as, 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 uh, Dave astutely pointed out, there's, I think you have. Some PR to do with Chromebooks going into next year, uh. But if there's a shift from perception of, about Chromebooks over this past year and how people feel about them. You know, January, February of next year, that could be very helpful. So I hope that, that you reflect on that. Uh, and, and, and have that opportunity to inform your planning. I, I just want to pick up on something that I hadn't thought about until you, uh, tucked it into some of your comments, uh, Dr. Harrison. Which is the, the, you talked about equity, uh, primarily here. In the school, but you said something that's really important, which is at home. Not everybody has the same speed. I, I work with video. I have a one gig connection at home. You know, it looks great when, when I get the stream or how I watch other people, but that's not true for everyone. There's an advocacy piece here. I know that the governor and the, hopefully legislature are out there trying to. Provide high speed, quality internet access for folks who, who don't have a ton of money. I know, I think that's the case right now. Folks during this COVID period, hopefully that'll be the case permanently. I think the district, I would ask you, keep that in mind, that if someone at home. Clearly, uh, doesn't have the same resources in terms of their internet access. It's not just about their experience. Device here, but that, you know, you didn't necessarily have the, the, um. You know, those jet packs, uh, in mind before, but you may want to be able to have that as a. Piece of equity for, for students.
Yeah. And then we actually, when we, we had meetings, uh, yesterday, I think it was when we were. I think we have Carol, um, thirty five families that we provided jet packs to. And so we recognize that a cellular service doesn't necessarily equate to that same level of service you're speaking of in your home, Michael. Um, but we are providing that as a resource. And when we think about our planning for. Um, some of the stimulus grant funds, we're looking at carrying some of that and. That forward to be able to make sure we're still supporting those families. Until such time, the legislators come through and really provide not just a discounted rate. But for those families that would qualify that we're giving a jet pack to, that would provide that direct high speed connection into their house.
There's also a, a new E-rate program that might be addressing this. So we're looking into that where it actually would. Provide the jet packs to the families. So there's, there's quite a bit of, um, movement on this front right now.
Very good. Uh, and, and just, yeah, just, uh, I, I think. This conversation has helped, uh, get a bit more into nuances that, uh. Were hard to see before about different devices, uh, in terms of the need. And I hope, uh, when we talk about equity, uh, we always want to be providing, uh, a device that's more than adequate. For what our students' learning experience is. Um, and so I even wonder, you know, trying to keep it a positive level, but hearing some of the things about equity. You know, having, uh, a student take, uh, an end of life device into high school. Uh, I, I wonder if, uh, you maybe want to shift it back rather than forward so you don't have. Ninth graders coming into high school with a device that's end of life while the next few years, uh, those kids have the latest and greatest. So.
That's a good point. And I'm, Jay, I'm looking at you now to make a note about that one. Um, but yeah, but then we think about that transition and building this into the high school next year, contemplating. Which devices we're putting in the students' hands.
And just, yeah, the last thought is, you know, when we think of equity, I hope it's about elevating the opportunity for students. In terms of their learning and achievement rather than, uh, what the critique would be. Particularly if people have not been thrilled about Chromebooks this year, that you're pulling, holding back student success.
Agreed.
Now I got a charger for my laptop that's died.
More?
Thank you. So if I, um, can hit a couple of, uh, points of clarity. On the sort of reporting that might be interesting to see, I think, I think, uh. Mr. Graber talked about. An understanding of what. What the time or the sort of, um, tasks were in. In total that, that students were working on in different schools. Think that would be very interesting to, to hear about it from a quantitative standpoint. This is probably the most quantitative. I mean. Talked about how it, it can push learning forward to. To be able to look at this sort of ongoing. Formative assessment of that, the term, uh, but as well, I think there's a lot of opportunity for, uh, quantitative. Measurement of, of what's happening with technology in the schools. And I hope that future reporting will take the opportunity to, um. To show us what that looks like. So it sounded, um, as well. Uh, as, as though, uh, Mr. Stromwasser referred to. Analysis of the help tickets, help desk tickets and things like that. Um, and, and Mr. Hannah had mentioned that this year has certainly been an exception to the. Um, the experience that we hope to have, but I guess I'd be interested in also knowing, um, whether or not. Analysis of help desk tickets lets us see if. So for example, the wireless, uh. Wireless coverage is. Uh, so are we, are we confirming its robustness? Is that, is that how we're doing that? Is that how we're knowing now that we are nearly at a hundred percent or, or at a hundred percent?
I'm not sure if I fully understand the question.
So would, what sort of, what sort of information, I guess, is queen from the help desk tickets would be another way of. So would what sort of what sort of information, I guess, is queen from the help desk tickets would be another way of asking.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So we and that's that's data that we're we are analyzing on a regular basis. So it's we we look at it for the 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 type of issue it is. So it's a connectivity. It's a break fix issue, something specific to the device. You know, they can be, you know, password, you account type access issues. So they actually differentiate all the different data to evaluate that and and look at the trend over that period of time. And so what's been interesting to look to follow the data. You know, we've seen the improvements in our in our Wi-Fi throughout the course of the year. So the connectivity issues have dropped off. But then when we had more kids coming back to campus, we had different types of issues happening. So as the the whole experience has changed, there's been like ebbs and flows in the data. But I'm sure I I'm sure that Jay could work with, you know, the other IT colleagues to be able to 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 kind of, you know, work that out to be able to see what those trends have been. And I know we have regular meetings where we do review that with them on a district level.
And I also wondered, because I think families were able to see where not just Google products, but other apps didn't seem to be able to handle the volume.
Oh, my gosh. And I would say just for the record related to that, there's updates that come out every day, whether it's from vendors or it's from the lower Hudson, Hudson Regional Information Center, the tech branch arm of BOSI's where we acquire lots of these services through where there's just notices about the applications themselves having tech problems that are then affecting schools. So they push that information out to us and it happens with such frequency that parents and students would go ballistic if we kept pushing them out, sending them out to them. But Jay probably sends two or three of those out a day district wide to staff identifying and giving updates on what's happening from a vendor standpoint, not anything having to do with the Irvington infrastructure.
Exactly. That's that's the point that I was trying to to underline that certainly, even when some of the apps I know do are are clearly doing a great job and they're being adopted in the classroom. I'm I guess I'm wondering are we looking at just the way that this enormous adoption uptake of usage in the apps is going to impact the in school experience now that kids are back in school. So is using? I mean, I can't, I can't off the top of my head think of which one any of my kids are using at any given time. But do we? Do we have sort of like a base level? This is the performance that we're satisfied with, or else we change apps, or we try and just not use technology for this. What what are sort of the performance issues in classrooms?
Dave facilitating a survey right now of all faculty and staff looking at the apps that are preferred, the apps that we're going to continue to invest in or subscribe to. And all those like types of issues go into the determination as to what we're going to use moving forward. So we are getting that level of feedback from staff right now, maybe not to the specificity of saying, you know, you know, the number of outages with this or that, but you know, the benefit of using this in your classroom. So we're going to have to look at, you know, that cost benefit analysis. Some of the disruptions or whatever outweighing the the pros or the cons of of utilizing it. So we are collecting data related to that. That's informing where we're going forward with software and applications. But that's very much a part of our our process this year.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining. I also wanted to want to bring back some questions to the elementary school. And I think generally, parents would be happy to know that there's a a balance, which is coming back into the elementary experience with devices obviously becoming a greater portion of 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 the kids' experience as they are becoming prepared for middle school, their learning in ways that also are appropriate, you know, to and at for their sensory needs. I think that I I what I from what I hear, there are opportunities in both directions. There are children who are able to learn better, for example, with the use of certain technology assistance and tools, but at the same time, there are going to be other kids who whose learning is so, for example, hindered by the fact that they no longer have a textbook that they can page through. So I am I'm interested in asking this question, maybe not for this particular meeting, but I want it to be one that that is publicly asked, which is related to the greater sophistication, I think, that Mr. Graber referred to of of the way that the technology tools are used and also measuring whether or not these these questions that that families may have about isn't my child really memorizing as well, doing doing drills, typing versus writing for math or writing, taking notes versus just typing, right? I mean, these are, these are bigger questions that I don't feel like the pandemic was a great place to answer them.
No, you're right.
And I think I think there's still, there's still in in the families' minds, particularly at the at the youngest ages.
Yeah, with our youngest kids, I told I totally agree. And then I would I come back to with that one middle school slide that, you know, you could see a student looking at the a resource on the Chromebook. Yet there she was with pencil and paper doing the the physical work, right? So I I and and I am one that is a, as much as I always seem to have a device in front of me. When I sit down and read something, whether it's a book, it's an article, I know just my own style. I want to read it on paper. I want to mark it. I want to write on it. And so that that's just how my mind works. And we also know that when we think about college and career readiness, that that experience when the kid, our children are going from high school to university or high school into career looks and feels very different than when we're thinking about our students progressing from Dallas Lane to Main Street School. So when we're thinking about that level of readiness, maybe that focus definitely needs to be at the higher end of the the grade spectrum, and we need to make sure that we still have those other experiences for our students.
Or maybe there needs to be flexibility within all of the grades, because I would, I would only, and this is, this is really a question maybe for a future a future presentation or future work, which which would be done with the ASI. So I would also I would also say that I'm really interested in how kids might work really well through the semester with Perdeck, but then when they're being asked to study at the end of the semester and they need to go back in and they don't have a book.
Yeah.
So learning, learning maybe to how those study skills, particularly when they're moving, really learning just how to study, say, in the middle school. I'm I'm very curious about, are they? Are they learning all the strategies that they can use? And particularly, I think those kids who have a harder time learning to learn, understanding that there's still flexibility for them, not tying them in necessarily always to. So I I just make this, I make this plea in in this presentation, but I know it is not the the role of this presentation. So I apologize.
Yeah, no, thank you. And what it reminds me of, though, and I'm trying not to prolong, maybe it'll be the last comment that had come from me for a while. It reminds me of the conversations that we had around Amplify going back three years ago. And that idea that we were going to continue to ensure that we provided that level of flexibility and choice for students. And that while much of the Amplify program was technology or web based, that we were still going to afford the the that flexibility and opportunity for children wherever possible to have that, you know, tactile, you know, printed material, handwritten experience as as was appropriate for that learner.
And again, and again, it's that idea of how do you get, how do you get some as as kids are asked to memorize perhaps, or to work with information in different ways. I mean, there's certain information that works really well in a collaborative environment, and I depend on my Google Docs, right, in in work every day. And, you know, Excel and other things that kids learn to use, but when they are learning to work with memorization, are we sure that the the technological aids are truly always aiding? And can we make sure to build back in that? What what is it called? Redundancy?
Yeah.
And, you know, more you bring up a really important point. And for for a teacher, whenever they're considering, what are the instructional resources they want to use? It's always a challenging answer. And you bring up the importance of thinking about is what I'm choosing right for every student in my class? Do I need to be approaching things differently for students, certain students? And even prior to the pandemic, there's a fair amount of research coming out, particularly about reading on a device as opposed to reading in a book and the difference of what happens in the brain and retention in that. And there's been an increase in the uptick of interest and research about how technology impacts student learning. So I think that so you're you're cutting edge there.
I just hope that I hope that our district can, at the same time that we're making these decisions about tech investments, can continue to stay on top of these trends, because the worst thing is to have invested and find that our practice is now right behind that optimum experience for student learning. But that is really not, that was not why we're here tonight. And so I would, I would just ask, again, many, many have gotten here before me that there be also flexibility in terms of I usage of Chromebooks so that those perhaps who want to use devices, other devices at home or for whom carrying, carrying it becomes a deal breaker. And they can leave it in the locker that there's, I mean, there, there seem like if we're using the lower cost device and we say that it is fully adequate for what we're asking it to do, that that flexibility of if a child wants to leave it and doesn't need it for for other things that they that that then gives them freedom to move around the community in a way that is also important because, you know, like leaving behind getting into a car, having some other place to go, walking to school and walking home is is part of a beneficial experience to a whole student.
Yeah.
Right? Not everyone does sports.
Hey, so you know, when we said we're gonna, we recognize, and I think we've demonstrated a lot of this over the last year and a half, that we develop practices and protocols and set some expectations. And then as we go through our experiences, we've been reflective, we've accepted feedback and we've adapted. And you know, I think that this is another area. And to me, it sounds, and maybe stop me if I'm wrong, that we're in a position where we're we're looking to move forward and we're going to navigate some of the PR components that we know are going to be a little bit more complicated. We're going to develop some protocols and expectations and policies as to how this will roll out in the schools. And then we're going to evaluate this on an ongoing basis throughout next year. And where necessary, we're going, we're going to adapt, just like we've demonstrated this year with all the craziness and around COVID and and that we're going to take that feedback to heart and and provide the best opportunity for our kids. Whether it's academic, personally, and to make sure we're doing our part as good partners.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor. I know. I'm sure Aaron has questions too.
Aaron. Thanks, Maura. I know it's getting late, so I'll talk more quickly than I usually do. I appreciate the thoughtful conversation that we're having around this. And Jay and to the principals, thank you for taking the time to walk through the thought process. I think it's been helpful to understand that. So I have a couple of questions, one of which Morris echoed, which I had the question about, you know, the differentiation in terms of tactile learning versus electronic learning. And I want to make sure we don't lose sight of our K through three children and more and and Chris, I know you've you've just talked about all that, but I really think that that that's really important. And also just the usage, you know, if I think about a K student using a device versus a third grader, you know, K is learning to read, right? So even just logging on to a device and doing all those things is just that much more challenging. So just love to have just a better understanding of how that technology is going to be used at Dow's at the various grade levels. And thinking about third grade is probably more of a transition to Main Street, but K through two is really a learning exercise. And, you know, as we talked about, Maura mentioned doing math drills online and things like that. And, you know, there's definitely that, you know, the kid, I'm sure this happens when they're writing too, but you know, they key the number in wrong. And they've hit enter so quickly, they can't even fix it. Whereas when they write the answer on a math minute or something like that, they can catch that they wrote the wrong number and adjust it and still have a minute to answer, you know, all the questions or whatever that might be, or even go back to one if they're struggling instead of timing out. Those were just things I noticed, like differences in watching my own child sort of take similar, doing similar exercises in different formats. And then the level of frustration that can occur in one versus the other. So I I thought that was interesting. So just understanding that better would be helpful for me as we understand what devices we're rolling out there, whether it's Chromebooks. I believe at the K through three level, also Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, are they using iPads for Amplify? Or are they using Chromebooks? Because I just wonder, you know, what devices do we really need at that school?
At this point, they are still only using Chromebooks.
They are, okay.
iPads were removed, you know, post pandemic as a cleaning protocol was not able to be established in most cases.
Oh, interesting. Okay. And then I guess similar to even what Maura was talking about, as we were talking about the evolution of technology and staying ahead of things. You know, if Chromebooks are becoming that much more advanced, what are the MacBooks and the iPads? And what are they doing? And how much further have they advanced in terms of technology? As we really take a step back to evaluate what our needs are going to be going forward. And I really just wonder whether or not the needs at the high school are different than the needs of the at the elementary schools in terms of devices. Chris, as you talked about going on to college or into a career and things like that, you know, maybe having a more advanced device and learning more advanced technology on other devices might make more sense at the high school level. I I don't know. I'm just throwing some ideas out there, kind of, you know, food for thought. Is is they're really, are they really building solutions versus a whole K through twelve solution? And as we're talking about the replacement or replenishment of policy and we talk about costs, you know, I don't know if a Chromebook has a shorter life than an iMac or another more robust device. But that's just something else to consider in the cost, because if an iMac can last five to seven years versus three to five, then that cost is being spread out over a longer timeframe. And if it's a better device, might be a better investment. So I just want to, I just want to understand that a little bit better. I think I heard Chromebooks have a life of three to five years. Is that?
Yep.
Correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And then I don't know if other devices, I I feel like people have.
Proportionately longer, yeah.
They are. So and the cost might be proportionally larger, but we might be a better bang for the buck. So I I personally want to understand that a little bit better, but especially as it relates to the high school. The other thing is, Chris, I think as it relates to equity and being in that classroom, everyone having the same device is definitely where we need to be. I think, though, it's hard to enforce that when kids go home that they actually use that just that device. And I we can't mandate it, right? So does it make more sense to really identify who has the need to take them home and not have kids schlepping things back and forth because that's what they're supposed to do? And then they don't actually use it anyway? And I think that was true at any grade levels. I don't, you know, I already had devices. And I think because last spring, the pandemic happened, I know families like, I mean, I know we personally wound up buying a device last spring because the device we had, which was, you know, fifteen years old, just decided not to work. And it was a luxury. There's no doubt about it, but we made the investment not knowing that there'd be this one to one opportunity in the fall. I'm sure there's other families that have done that as well. By and by no means did we buy something expensive. So I just want to think about that too with equity, like, do the kids really have to take them home? Or can we really identify who needs to take them home? And the rest can stay in the buildings and be accessible to kids in the building. They don't bring their own, but the the one to one is available, as David pointed out. Sorry. Oh, and then one other thing, sorry. As as far as parental involvement or community, other stakeholder involvement, I think, and Jay, you touched on this when you talked about the tech committees that were in place by building. I think I don't know if this is a conversation in terms of devices. That's a, I don't recall seeing that on the slide, but I think it might be helpful to talk about devices in those meetings as well, especially if there's parent parental constituents involved. Just to get our feedback of how kids are using the devices at the different building levels, just sitting on the survey committee meeting, whatever date that was this week or last week was, I thought, very helpful, like, parents have really interesting perspectives on 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 what we were talking about, that sometimes even as board members, although we're parents too, we kind of forget. So I I think, you know, having parental discussions around this or stakeholder discussions around it, I think, would be helpful. And just something to consider. And you mentioned the tech committees already, so I think that's it's probably on your radar. And that's it, because it's getting. it's probably on your radar. And that's it, because it's getting late and Brian hasn't talked yet. Buring to everybody else, so.
Oh, I, I did have my questions initiative. Thanks, Erin. I do just want to pick up on something when we were talking about life cycle, because I think something that has been mentioned. You know, a device that may last, you know, say MacBook lasts six years versus a Chromebook, you know, three or four years. Also the thing that if a student's been given, given a MacBook in ninth grade and now they leave, that device has two years left. Are we then giving some students devices that are end of life versus giving other students devices that are newer? So I also think we need to be looking at, we're looking at lifecycle, looking at who's being given a device and for how long do we want them to be using that device? So that there's some alignment in that, you know, kids are getting, you know, devices that are of a similar.
I, I think by way of policy, and I, you know, I'm trying, so I've been trying to redirect, redirect it tonight, that I think trustees' children get all the old devices.
That's fine.
But no, a lot of thought has to go into that.
Exactly. So, you know, it's, it's a very nuanced conversation and I think there's been a lot of, you know, ideas thrown, thrown out here, you know, I think, you know, certainly helpful. I'll just say, you know, one other thought that I had because, you know, I came into this not appreciating the amount of time it takes to log on, log off, you know, in a more of a cart model. So, you know, I was coming and thinking, you know, even at the high school, you know, why do we need kids to be carrying devices throughout the day? Why can't we just have carts in every class that they, that they, you know, check out and, you know, hearing, especially David and Allison talk about, you know, what that's, what that's meant in their schools, you know, really helpful in terms of, you know, my thinking around it and in terms of the value of, you know, a child having a device that they carry with them throughout the day that's already logged in and that they can just sit down at that next class and, and log on. So, you know, I, I, I want to say that was really helpful in my thinking and how my thing evolved, you know, over the course of the meetings. So, you know, I, I think, you know, at this point, I, I don't want to, you know, longer. I think there's, you know, a lot of follow-up questions, Dr. Harrison, that you've heard from the various trustees. And I think most importantly is, you know, hopefully seeing the technology in a more regular environment and having, you know, another meeting next year, pre-budget time where we can talk about, you know, the experience and what we've seen and from a device standpoint, what our needs are, both, you know, for that coming year and years later and what the best devices may be. So.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt for a minute. I just want to chime in. I would really like to see what Maura was talking about and Erin. A report also on, on a building by building basis, what kind of technology, what?
Usage report.
No, no.
Well, you're talking curriculum. I think that's a whole other.
I would like to see if that folded in, because we've had that report.
Another time, because I think we're talking about curriculum and, and it's going to look and feel different from every grade level, every subject.
But I, because I want to say it's great. Because when I looked at that page, I saw that be as many as 100, because there's 10 on a page and there were 10 pages on, you know, page 12 of the development. Great that there's. But I want to add surveys on what we're talking about today. And I, I know we may be leading into something other than what the topic is, but to parents and to students, particularly, and very key to standing where we're. And I just want to add to what Brian said. Survey results actually show this isn't middle school, that not taking those devices out of tubs in a class saved up to seven minutes in each period.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
I want to add one thing real quick also, just as a, because I heard a couple of people say it then. In regards to, I, 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 I tend to agree with you, Brian. And I just want us to think about that as a group. You know, the, the, there's a fine line. More had said something about tactile versus tech, right? If you'd said that more, and it made me, rang a bell to me that we, I think Chromebooks actually strike a real good balance between the two. I know they're not the best computers on the market, but for what we're going to need them for going forward, I just want us to consider like, again, this isn't about bells and whistles and gorgeous machinery. This is about usage and what they need to use to, 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 to complete assignments, to challenge themselves with projects that they're being assigned to them. So I just, I think it's a worthy conversation if we're going to talk about types of devices that we've been talking about tonight, to just keep that into consideration. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. But I think that's where that meeting next year will be informative when hopefully kids have been using the device now in a school environment to get that feedback in terms of, is it sufficient for the tasks that we want students to do on a regular basis as opposed to the specialized things that we've talked about, which clearly need a, a different device. And I, I do just want to say, you know, something else about the, you know, the coaching we've been having. I think I'll be interested to see what the research is. I also think we also have to look at it from the perspectives we're all coming at. I am very much a printout paper. I still handwrite things. But I see the 23-year-olds in my office who work much differently, who have grown up with technology, who are much better at editing on a screen than I am. And so I think we, you know, we all come at from us in our, probably all at least our 40s, probably at this point in how we grew up and grew up in a, in a different way and learned in a different way. And, you know, our modalities may not be the same as kids. And I think that's really where we need Dr. Harrison. It won't be Ms. Elsley, Ms. Duffy and the others to really, you know, lead and help guide that work in terms of, you know, where technology is appropriate and, you know, what are the best uses?
So, so Brian, if I may, I'm thinking of a, a sports program that I, that I watch and a, a news program that I listen to. And at the end of the program, they always go back and they fact check and correct things that they stated that were wrong throughout the night. So I'm, I'm going to go back and fact check. So three things that have surfaced throughout the night that I, that I, I do want to either correct or clarify. Coming back to Beth with a question about the weight of a Chromebook. The weight of the device itself is, is three pounds, but by the time you add the weight of the case, that's another pound. The weight of the charger, which is another, and you're a pound and a half, you're pushing that seven, seven pound limit. When we're talking about the number or the percentage of devices being utilized at the high school, consistently throughout the year, we're looking at 40%. But now that we're in testing period, that number has increased. So that's where I drew the higher number from. And then when talking about the redundancy in, that we've built in in Irvington that doesn't exist elsewhere, I just want to clarify that we're talking about redundancy of internet service, not redundating of electric, redundancy of electrical service. So if we have, we have two different pipes essentially coming into the district, two different internet services we subscribe to and we split the service across the campus. So if one of the network, one of the providers goes down, which we know happens, we can flip all the service to the other one, keep everybody up, albeit slower, but everybody's still up. So we have essentially two pipes feeding the district and we control the volume between them. We would, we, oh. Yeah, we're going to get an exercise bike and I'm just going to sit there. So we got an agenda to wrap.
I just, I just had one statement to, to wrap it up as well, is that we spent a lot of time talking about devices. But, you know, i- if you have this conversation going into the beginning of budget season, you also kind of locked yourself into some personnel as well, because with this greatly expanded use of technology, we know, and we've heard that that's part of the conversation too. More people to help support that.
Thank you.
And that's not cheap.
So we now have our consent agenda. So are there any questions on tonight's consent agenda? There are none? Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? All in favor?
Hi.
So just to, to make some quick notes that, you know, we, we have a lot of routine business and some related to athletics and, you know, mergers that we have for a, a couple of our teams. But importantly tonight, we do need to take time to acknowledge that we are naming a dressing room in the campus theater in honor of our late and beloved school counselor, Claudia Rodriguez. We look forward to having a small ceremony where we put a nice plaque on the space and name it officially in the honor of, of Claudia. We also want to thank our partners at the PTSA and the IEF for funding many grants, some of which are being implemented within this year and others that are going to be for the upcoming school year. And we also have a donation to one of our scholarship funds, Zachary Cayman Fund. So we certainly extend our thanks to, to Mr. Cayman for, for that support.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. We'll move on to our now second, the comment period. So if there's anyone who wants to make a comment, put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom and you'll be recognized. I do also, while we're waiting, I should have done this earlier, so my apologies, but I do want to thank all of the administrators who joined us this evening and for their, their feedback. I know we went late into the evening, but certainly appreciated for the board to hear your lens into the issue and we really do appreciate and value the feedback. So thank you for, for that.
Thank you.
So seeing, seeing none. Our next meeting is here on June 8th at 7:30 as Dr. Harrison mentioned. Before that, we will have a ceremony to honor both recent retirees as well as those who received tenure. So we look forward to that, looking forward to a return to, you know, somewhat of our normal routines, which will be nice. And is there a motion to adjourn our meeting? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.